Okay, we'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, November 7. We've got five out of the seven commissioners here.
We have two absences this evening on the commission.
Okay. And we'll have any public comments for items not on the agenda? I don't have any speaker cards. But now's your chance. So without that, we can move to the study session. We'll start with item number one in the study session, 343 Main Street.
Let me get this up on the screen. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is a study session this evening for a mixed-use project at 343 Main Street. This is the site. It's located in our downtown core. As you know by the address, it is located on Main Street and it fronts from Main Street to the public parking plaza at the back of the site. Here is a vision from the street at the front of the existing building that's on the site. And then here is the back of the site that fronts on the public parking plaza. The site is developed with a one-story building that is used right now for commercial space, and the applicant is proposing a two-story mixed-use structure with a commercial space on the lower level and a residential unit on the upper level. On the upper level, the residential unit will have a deck that faces onto Main Street. And on the lower level, there will be a two-car carport that provides parking for the residential unit on the upper floor. This site, because it is part of the former downtown parking district, a floor area ratio of the lot size, parking is not necessary for 100% of that floor area ratio. And this lot size is 2,500 square feet, so 2,500 square feet of commercial is not required to provide onsite parking, so it does meet the parking requirements per the zoning code. Here is the second floor. The lower portion of this image is the location of the deck that fronts on Main Street. There is a fireplace, and I believe it was a hot tub that was being proposed there. It's a two-bedroom unit with a kitchen and restroom facilities. And then focusing on Main Street again, this is the design of the proposed building. It is, again, two stories, and you can see it in relationship there to the two buildings at the east and west side of the existing or the site. And you can see the windows on the upper level that lead to the deck at the front of the building, and then the doorway, double doorway, at the commercial space on the first level that leads tenants into the, and customers into the commercial area from Main Street. And then this is the rear elevation of the building. You can see that the open area there at the bottom is the proposed carport. That would be a covered carport. And those are two small balconies from the residential unit on the upper floor that open out onto the parking plaza. My memory serves me correctly, the plans for this show that the windows do, those doors do swing out into the public parking plaza area, so there are functioning windows. I'm not certain about whether or not there's much of a deck or platform to stand on for someone in the building to walk out and, you know, get a bit of fresh air at that point, but at least they're able to open those windows. I would assume, since they do open out, that there's probably sufficient room there to allow for the swing of the windows or the doors. There's probably then enough room for someone to stand out at that point. These are a number of questions that we brought up into the agenda report for the study session to consider regarding the architectural design of the building, especially its relationship to the street frontage on Main Street. Is it compatible with the existing buildings at either side and to the back of the site? Are the proportions of the building elements, especially at ground level, kept close to the human scale or the pedestrian scale? Are the proposed exterior materials and finishes integral to the project's architectural design, and do they convey a sense of quality, integrity, permanence, and durability? That brings us to the end of staff's presentation on the project this evening. Here's a rendering provided by the applicant of the front of the building from Main Street. And with that, we will hand it over to the applicant so he can do a presentation on the project unless the commission has any questions for staff.
Mr.?
Sure. Yeah. So can you confirm whether residential on second floor in this zone is permitted or conditional use?
Residential uses on the second floor would be a conditional use in this zone district.
Thank you.
Is that your only question?
Can you explain further the parking requirements for this property, which is part of the original parking plaza?
Yes. A building providing commercial space up to the square footage of the lot size does not need to provide parking for that square footage that equates to the lot size. Anything above that parking is required unless the project provides some type of public benefit, and that public benefit is up to the discretion of the city council to determine if it's appropriate, and you would certainly be able to weigh in on that recommendation. But that, up to 2,500 square feet, does not require parking. The residential unit, however, there is parking required for that, and the required parking is two off-street covered park, I'm not even sure if they're covered, just two off-street parking spaces for that residential unit. And that's what the applicant is proposing on this particular project.
Do we have boards for this, material boards?
I will look to the applicant to see if they have a material board for this. I'm sort of pinch hitting for the staff planner this evening on these projects, so I'm not real familiar with, if they did provide a board, where that might be.
We do not have one.
Okay. That's okay.
A electronic copy was submitted to the cap materials.
If you're gonna have to speak in the microphone because if we want him to answer the question now, or do we wanna wait?
I already got the question. The answer is no.
Right. The answer is no.
Something.
Yes.
I didn't miss it.
Yes.
Renee, did you have any other questions?
No.
Got a couple of questions. The balconies that encroach onto the public right-of-way, is that, I remember in other projects coming before us, that was not allowed?
My recollection is...
What was it? The one right here? That was part of, I think that was one of the issues with that project, is that they were, even though it was however many feet up, it was still encroaching over the lot line.
Well, the address for that is that our Public Works Department can issue an encroachment permit for a element of a building. There's some indemnification requirements and some insurance requirements for those encroachments. And there are also some standards for the distance between the sidewalk and the bottom of the encroaching portion. So I've seen a number of encroachments here in this city approved for projects.
Okay. A lot in the downtown?
In the downtown, yes.
And then in looking at the aerial on page three, it looks like currently there's no parking in the back of 343 Main? Is that?
That's...
Is that correct?
Let me see. I'm just gonna go back to that elevation. There's, yeah, it doesn't appear that there's any parking for this building. There's some parking on the property adjacent to this one, but not for this site.
And do we know how many, in how many instances that happens downtown?
I took a look at the, kind of going, using Google Earth to go up and down, using that little icon that you can look at the streetscapes, and there appeared to be about four or five instances where there was room on a site to pull off of the parking plaza and actually park on the property. But there weren't any instances where you had a situation similar to what is part of this project, not a carport situation.
I think those were my only two questions for staff. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so with that, we'll have up to 10 minutes for the applicant to present if they'd like to.
Hi there. My name's Gary Wong. I'm the architect on the project. They did a great job summarizing the project and seeing how we're trying to modify the building to something that's a lot more conducive to the environment around it. We've tried to provide a building that was also handicap accessible because we know that the existing building right now does not give us the right slope in the very front to be able to get into the building. So we looked at the building to try to provide something that's feasible for handicap as well, which is important for today's purposes. The building has, we do have the materials in back in our office. We provided a electronic copy of the materials to Sean in the process of providing all our materials. The materials are from Croatia, and it's very high-quality materials that we've used. And we've provided the materials onto the elevation, which creates a very nice look and feel to that building. As you can see, the majority of the buildings along that whole street are a mix of different architectural styles. And we do want to present some, a building that is very architecturally striking, as well as blends with the rest of the environment. So we, I think we did do that, and hopefully you agree to that as well. The deck on the second floor, we provided basically to give a sense of setting the elevation back a little bit, so it's not just a two-story building. It goes straight up, and it just overwhelms the pedestrian from down below. So it is bringing it to more to a pedestrian scale, in a sense, so that when you're walking by, it's not just overwhelming your feeling of something right against your body. In the back, the balconies there in back, we provided those mainly to give a sense of style to the back as well, and not just a facade that does not have any character to it. We did talk to Sean about that, to try to get a sense of that's allowed or not. And like you said, it is a possibility, and there are options that we do have to go through the insurance and the different departments to get it approved, but it is a feasible option as well. Our rendering that we provided gives a good sense of what we want to do up there in that elevation. And we provided kind of a softening of that front elevation with some of the plants that are in that planter strip in the very front and top. So you don't just see materials of hard surfaces on that front facade. We softened it enough to provide something that's a little more conducive to the environment. That's all I have right now. If you have any questions, obviously, go ahead and ask me.
I wanted to know where the mail would be delivered?
The mail usually for the, the entrance for residential is in the back. So the mailbox would be also in the back.
You said this would be...
I'm done.
You're done. This would be handicapped accessible, but I didn't see any elevator, so the residence is not handicapped accessible.
Well, the residential is not required to be ADA compliant. It's mainly for commercial use at the ADA compliance.
So you're not making that claim on the residence?
Correct. Yes.
What's the rationale for a jacuzzi in the front balcony over Main Street?
It's just one of the items that we discussed as the owners and myself, that, you know, we want to, we want to be open about it and give you what they feel might be a sense of what they want up there. And so we provided that as an option as to what would be up there. As to the final outcome of what actually goes up there is still to be determined.
I guess I have another one if, yeah, if nobody else. So you also, back to the balcony in the front, you, at one point, show a fireplace on there. I don't see, if you look at the cutout, I don't, where that wall is, I don't actually see how you'd have the depth to put a fireplace. Have you looked at that and thought about, you know, so there's no, you're not showing any venting or anything? So is that something you've just stuck in the drawing there for now?
No, the, what we have is a fireplace on the outside on that deck. It's on the, it's on the left-hand side.
Yeah, no, I know. That's exactly what I'm commenting on.
And so that's on the outside of the, on the balcony, which allows for them to have a seating area for when it gets, if it gets cold, they have a place that they can gather and just have a nice place for a fire to be there.
Right.
The fireplace will have a chimney that goes up, and it goes up above the building by about two feet, which is what is required by code.
So if you look at A 5.2, and on the top right, there's a proposed building section, which I think is showing us that deck, I don't really, I don't see where you'd have that.
You are correct. It's not on that elevation, not on that section.
Right.
Correct.
So it's not there, but even if it were to be there, I don't see how, how you have the space to do that, or...
The fireplace would pretty much sit where the, if you look at this 7G, that number right there? It'd be sitting right in that location, and the chimney would go straight up past the front of the building.
That's enough for now.
Another question. The, the staff report says glass balcony railings, but that's not what I'm seeing in the elevations.
No.
Are there glass?
We don't have glass.
Balcony?
Yes, balcony railings.
Anyone else? The, the glass along the front on Main Street, that's proposed as nano-wall?
I'm sorry, is it proposed as...
Nano-wall?
Nano-wall?
Yeah.
The upper glass you're talking about?
Correct.
Yes. So it would be similar to that. It'll open all to one side, so you have one big opening.
And so is that what you're showing on A 2.1? Is it opening and stacking basically between the glass wall and what would be the glass wall and the fireplace there? Is that what that black?
Yeah.
That's showing it's stacked?
So all of them slide on track?
Yeah.
And they're individually can...
And then they turn and stack?
Turn.
Yeah.
And they'll have a little track that allows it to mount.
But that is, and that, so...
That is an nano-wall.
It is a nano-wall, and so the entire thing will open up to the outside? Okay.
It'll give that open inside-to-outside feel to that entire space.
And then, when you were talking about being set back and giving reverence to the pedestrian experience, you're talking about on Main Street?
Yes. Correct.
Okay. But the entire, it's hard to tell in plan unless I'm missing it somewhere, but how much of that, is that what the dash line is? That's basically, that dash line on the outdoor deck is what you're proposing, is the covered area of the deck?
There's a really good picture on 5.2. 5.2, this section.
So over the...
Where?
Over in the nano-walls, there is the overhang over the...
There's an overhang off the door, and then it's open beyond that. So where it says 7A?
Oh, got it.
That's the parapet. So you can see on the covered line, excuse me for stealing your thunder, that dotted line is where the outdoor deck is completely exposed at the top, whereas there's a section of it you could store your furniture under. That would be under a roof, but then the actual wall is behind that.
Right. But just, I mean, three-quarters of the fireplace is outside of that and three-quarters of the proposed?
I don't think the fireplace is quite in the right location.
That's what I said.
It's a computer, I think it's an artifact of the computer program.
Okay. Those, I think those were... Sorry. And then, one more. Can you, so if you look at 5.2, it looks like there's an, is there some kind of awning or covering over the entrance?
Yes, there's a glass and metal cover. It's pretty much an awning that sticks out directly from the building. And so we're looking at materials that will make it look like it disappears more so than protrude out and make a dark space underneath it. We want to put glass up above there so that the light can go straight through to the storefront.
But that's not showing on the section at this moment?
I think it is.
It's dashed in.
It's right here between 7C and 7...
It's 7J dotted in.
Yeah.
Yes. Correct.
Go ahead and find my reference.
So just curious, the sign, the sign for the future retail store, do you imagine that going above that 7J that you just pointed out, or would it go below the plant?
We haven't decided on that yet.
So you don't have like a specific spot?
If I were to answer right now, I would say probably on top of the awning.
On top of the awning?
Yes.
Okay.
I had a final question. I know that the doors in the back are egress light and air for the bedrooms. They are compliant issues. What I was curious about is, have you considered skylights in the bathroom or study? Because since it's the middle of a row house, for all intents and purposes, there's no light in that center zone at all. And you have skylights in the great room, in the living room area. Had you considered putting skylights in, say, the bathrooms or the study?
We have a skylight that's over the...
Sphere.
Staircase.
Yeah.
Which is in the middle of the building.
Yeah, but I was wondering maybe more, because there's no natural light in, in the center, for obvious reasons. So there's a room that's called a study that is basically a box with no natural light whatsoever. And then there are, there's a powder room, two bathrooms, and a central hallway, none of which will be getting natural light, except from the stair, there'll be leaking some. So I was wondering if you might consider improving the quality of those spaces?
Oh, of course.
Having skylights in them as well?
That's more unreasonable.
And have you talked to the post office about delivering mail to the residences here?
We have not yet.
Okay.
We will do that.
They might have some interesting facts for you.
Okay. That's good to know.
Maris, did you have something else?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move to...
No one came, no one asked to speak? No public comment?
I'm gonna ask to see if anyone did. If there's any public comment, if you'd like to speak, please bring up a speaker card. I don't have any so far. So with that, we'll close public comment and open it up for discussion.
All right. So based on the downtown vision and the general plan, I think that the concept and plan for this project does align with those objectives. I think that I had to kind of look back at the downtown vision, but, you know, residential on top does feel like the goal, although this is a very different type of project for Main Street. One thing I'll just say is, I, when I first saw the project, I was surprised there was only one unit on top. Obviously, there's factors and reasons that went into that, but I just noticed what you could do in terms of the space. The ground level on the Main Street side, which is basically the retail component, I think, I think is fine. I think it matches with its surroundings, and the, for me, the problem is really with the second level, where you have the residential. Looking at other projects that we've looked at, specifically on First Street, there is a certain architectural quality that, you know, we have with residential units, and I don't think this has that yet. The project at 389 First Street specifically had a mixed use with office on the top and residential, or sorry, office on the bottom and residential on top, and there was kind of a clear language between the two. So I look at how you're designing that residential component, you know, looking at materials, colors, you know, different articulation with the balcony. And then there's kind of, there's a reliance on ornamentation, I feel like, on the rendering. I don't know if, John, you could go back to the rendering. There's, there's this planner box that feels kind of tacked onto the front. I just think that architecturally, you could design that, where you have a planner within the balcony, instead of just throwing it on the, on the front. And the same goes for the rear, which I think needs, needs a lot more work. You have two windows and two balconies, and again, it just feels, you know, tacked on. So, you know, just looking at other projects that we've, we've approved and how those balconies are being designed, architecturally, how to create that balcony and not just kind of tack it on. The parking area in the back, I think, also needs to be looked at. I think it was, it was confirmed earlier, this is probably the first project that's incorporating parking into the building. So I just think that instead of that wide opening, I think that, you know, exploring ways of how that could look, I don't think that a gate or a, or a door or anything like that would, would work, but maybe having a border around the opening, maybe having a trellis above. I just think that that rear condition is really gonna dictate future projects on Main Street. And then the jacuzzi and the fireplace, it's an interesting choice. There's been a lot of discussions about rooftop decks and rooftop amenities, so I don't think that that will go over very well with council, but it's up to you, I guess. And that was all I had. Yeah.
Okay. So I'm, I appreciate that this is a study session and an opportunity to have a conversation with you about... have a conversation with you about what you would like and what we think is appropriate in this space. I also, I'm, I would like to see more housing on top of our commercial spaces and retail spaces in our downtown. So I appreciate that this accomplishes that. My primary issue with it is, it feels like there, when you have housing in our downtown, particularly in the absolute core, as this location is, there is a delicate balance between the pedestrian experience and the homeowner's ability to privately enjoy their space. And I feel like this actually creates an environment of a very public enjoyment of the space. And part of it is just the massive size of this outdoor deck. I think I'm, you know, 24 feet by 14, half word, at 335 square feet for this deck. And it's, it's sort of exacerbated by this 19-foot opening nano wall that opens into this great room, so it ends up feeling like this, what should be a private enjoyment of this home is actually gonna feel very public to the folks on the street. I'm not a fan of the jacuzzi right there either. Just doesn't feel like it's accomplishing what that balance should be in such a prime retail and pedestrian area. So, in my mind, that, I do think that it, it works to have the second floor recessed, but not to the degree that the outdoor deck is, you know, larger than each of the bedrooms and kind of becomes just this massive outdoor room. In terms of the materials, I actually really don't have a sense of what this will look like. This photo, in my mind, doesn't give us enough detail, and the description of the materials, both in the staff report as compared to the, you know, elevation page that sort of calls them out, I really don't know what I'm, I'm gonna be looking at. So it's hard for me to, to give feedback on that, but it's... In my mind, it, it looks very commercial. I'd like to see some elements that feel residential to the residential component. So I would encourage you at that next stage to help bring that to life to us, bring the materials, give us a lot more detailed and enlarged descriptions of what the, what the building is gonna look like.
Okay, so I echo the comment that residential above commercial is a thoughtful planning approach. I think it's appropriate. I think how it's done, as we're seeing, as the commissioner is walking along the dais, is critical, because it is pretty much among the first, if not the first. I want to move back globally and say that I have difficulty seeing this as part of the village. I think there's a level of large-scale elements, large openings, even the commercial area where we do have glass required for display for commercial along the street, this doesn't seem to have, to me, enough separation of the elements that gives you a sense of human scale. And particularly, the stone is a very formal material. We're seeing a lot of it in our large-scale multifamily buildings, not so much in town in, on state and main, which is the heart of the CRS, where we have this whole village character. I think there's, the village character is lacking here significantly, and part of it is the projection. I think stepping the second floor back is a good idea, but maybe if it had, didn't have such a vertical face, but I'm very concerned about the formality of the elements, in particular of the commercial area. Because as I look at it adjacent to the other buildings, it's reading very much larger than the other ones, which it is, and it would be better if it wasn't. And the kind of elements that are called out in the downtown design are awning, sloped roofs, more informal materials. This has, as much as I can tell from the description in the photo, which is why I asked for the board, because we've often been unclear about what we're getting till we actually see the material board. But here, it feels to me like it's very formal, and we could do better. I really appreciate Commissioner Maris' comment about the planter. Maybe if the planter was part, was the railing, was the whole dimension of the width of it, so we got a sense of significant green, that would be fine. I think a hot tub is inappropriate. I think having fire outside in this area is probably not a great idea either. We'll have to see what council has to say. I agree with Maris that the back really needs some improvement, because the parking area, which is important and required, is a giant hole in the back. And I'm wondering if the building, the actual rear of the building could pull back on the second floor, so that you actually could step out on the balcony, or the doors could swing in, because the balcony is literally only to allow the doors to swing. There's no way that anybody can use it other than for that. And so, I think it needs to be better. And I also think that those, that particular style of railing, again, is not part of the downtown vision when we look at the design review guidelines for the downtown. This is not part of the vocabulary that we're looking for. I did say previously that there's an opportunity, because this is on the second floor, to get natural light in the center of the building, in the spaces, not just in the stairway, but in the spaces that people might actually be using, the study, the bathrooms. So that's something that would be a relatively easy fix. I was wondering about solar panels. I'm talking about punching more holes in the roof, but it would be nice to get some solar panels up there as well. I have a similar comment about the proposed projecting canopy, which is, if you look at the design review, the design guidelines for the downtown, for the heart of the village, that kind of style is really not part of it. So I think that going back to look at the specific characteristics that are cited for the features of a building in the village, this, I think, at this moment, does not have village character in any way. That's all.
Okay. Some excellent comments by my colleagues. I'm going to, I want to reiterate, I actually didn't feel that we had much to look at here. And what was here was really small, so even with my glasses on and, you know, so obviously, this is a study session, you'll develop the information, but we really have to see it. And I want to echo the materials. Right now, it just looks like a quilt. It's kind of puffy. And I know that is not what you have in mind, so we really have to see that. But I want to take it back a step to whether this is or isn't consistent with our general plan and our zoning there. So Mr. Biggs confirmed that residential on the second floor is conditional use. And so in order to grant a conditional use, we have to find various that this does promote what we're trying to do. The word that, that I think makes me think that this is not consistent is that we're really encouraging residential above the ground floor that includes affordable housing units. And I'm assuming that this is not, being a single unit, is not affordable housing. And are you envisioning this as purchase or rental? Probably rental, or rental probably? Anyway, so this, this is not affordable housing, so it really doesn't help with that at all. I think you're also at a disadvantage in that we don't really, we don't have a lot of residential on top of commercial in this part of the downtown. And going first is always difficult, but going first with one single unit is just such an oddity. I mean, to me, this is just really weird. You know, so I know that comes across a little strong, maybe you can couch it a little more, you know, a better fit when you come back next time. But I actually am not convinced that this is appropriate for downtown. I completely agree with the comments. I don't think the fireplace belongs there. Who in the world is gonna step out into a jacuzzi on Main Street? I mean, I know I'm not. But anyway, maybe other people have, don't care. But I mean, it's, you know, make it a simple balcony. Anyway, I, you know, the rest of the comments about how it looks, I agree, it's kind of, it doesn't necessarily look like it fits in yet, but your materials board will help a lot, and I don't want to belabor the rest of the comments that I agreed with, that my colleagues made. So my one addition is that I'm not actually convinced that this is an appropriate use for a single unit to be the first in, in the triangle like this, given that it's just one rental market rate unit. So, okay, I'm done.
So I echo everything that's been said. I think for me, I'm okay with it looking bigger than everything else, because that's where we're going, and should be allowed to, you know, we're still building within the limits of our zoning. But for me, the fundamental issue is, and I can get past that it's just one, one unit. For me, the fundamental issue is one of creating another curb cut onto a very public sidewalk, and increasing vehicular traffic across that. And, you know, imagining, you know, a slew of, you know, basically starting the precedent for that to be the case, and all of a sudden, kind of that whole backside of all these buildings become essentially an alley. And we lose the ability to start dividing up some of these buildings to have kind of front-facing Main Street access, as well as perhaps dividing them and also having kind of access to the backside into the parking plazas, and really helping to revitalize and, what's the right word?
Enliven?
Enliven. Kind of those parking plazas. And so, for me, that's the biggest fundamental issue, is that we're going to create this wide swath of, basically, parking on the, on the backside of this building, which doesn't seem to really be in the rhythm of everything else that's happening downtown. And I think that's, that's all I can, you know, that's, that's my biggest, that's my biggest issue. I think all of these other things can be resolved and worked through in the, in the process, but I don't know how that, how that could get fixed. And I don't even know if, like, bringing it down to just one spot, or tandem, or, you know, trying to create some kind of elevator down to a basement, like, I don't know. I think just having cars cut across that, that backside sidewalk that people are using to access some of the other retail in our downtown is gonna hurt, end up hurting the downtown.
Another reason why we need a parking and loop program, because we don't want all of these small little lots to start putting parking in the back in this manner.
Yeah. So that's, that's all I have.
Does he need more comment?
Did you guys have any comments or questions?
Do you have sufficient, do you have sufficient information to go forward, to work with staff on these?
Can you come up to the microphone, just so everyone else can?
Hello? My name's Yvonne Margretich. You guys do bring up good points in regards to the material boards, and I guess the vision of what you see, it seems pretty, like, clean-cut. Kind of, there's areas, I guess, we could soften it, and like, you were talking about the rear side, some larger openings that do present itself in kind of an odd way. I think for that, what was tough was for this residential unit, each bedroom would need one parking. And what we did in the back area was, it was tough, because we were trying to have a clear entrance for the commercial, excuse me, a clear entrance for the commercial while also having a clear entrance for the residential. So what we did is, we, we tried to separate the two entrances, giving one entrance for the commercial upstairs on the side, while also having a commercial entry on the other side. And then, in regards to the front, for the front balcony area, I know you guys mentioned that there's a sense of privacy that might be lost. Earlier, you mentioned there was a glass railing. One of the main reasons we actually switched it was to provide more privacy for this upper deck, and that's why we pushed back the balcony, so that you could have your own space and not have people just shaking your hand from below, you know? And in regards to the fireplace and the jacuzzi, a little bit of a stretch, but for a fireplace, I think it would be nice to have some sense of warmth out there. It wouldn't, it could be an electric fireplace or on propane, I think a smaller use would be helpful. Jacuzzi, I mean, is a whole nother thing in itself, but it would bring a little, bring a different kind of feel. But otherwise, we're gonna definitely take in what you guys said about everything. And redo the, the material also. What I want to mention is the material would be authentic stone coming from Croatia. We built a custom home actually in Los Altos Hills using the same exact material. It looks beautiful. We just got it finalized in the last year. So it would definitely be much more vibrant, it could definitely fit in. The village style, the stone comes from the village, villages of Croatia. So that's essentially the beginning of where it came. Otherwise, oh, in regards to the planter also, we do, we were meaning to set it in the railing. We wouldn't want it protruding out. We didn't want it to be tacky whatsoever. So then, we, yeah, we totally agree with all that.
Thank you.
That's about it, thank you.
That is going to bring us to item number two, which is 4896 El Camino. And I am going to recuse myself.
I should say why?
Because I am a renter in one of their properties.
So, good evening.
Ashley, aren't you refusing yourself for the rest of the meeting?
And for the rest of the meeting, because I am also potentially conflicted on the item number four.
Thank you. Okay, so, as soon as Alex can gather his stuff, we will have a continuing study session on 4896 El Camino Real from the Hayes Group. I, whoa. I, whoa. I have two requests to speak on the El Camino project.
Excuse me, Mrs. Bresik. Just for the record, by consensus, since we don't have the vice chair present, you should amongst yourselves, um,
Oh, pardon me.
Come to consensus on who will serve as the acting chair for this.
Commissioner Bresik to be our acting chair.
Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I will take over temporarily anyway. So the first thing is a staff report on this item, which is a new mixed-use development at the corner of El Camino Real and Jordan Avenue.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bresik, members of the Planning Commission. John Biggs with your Community Development Department. You have a second study session item this evening. This one is for a mixed-use project at forty-eight ninety-six El Camino Real. Here is a partial city plan showing the location of the property. It's on the Los Alto side of the El Camino Real at the corner of, uh, Jordan Avenue. And just walking you briefly around the building, here is the site from the, kind of the, the northern side of the El Camino Real looking towards the existing development that's there, which is a fast-food restaurant. And then going down Jordan Avenue, there is a single-family dwelling on the site as well behind the fast-food restaurant. That then takes us to the site plan for the project. Here along the right-hand side of the, um, the drawing on the screen is the El Camino Real. The bottom portion of this is the location of Jordan Avenue. The access to the underground garage area is off of Jordan Avenue. And then the commercial building, the, the predominant area of the commercial building and the location of the residential units on the upper level of the commercial building are right there at the edge of the, uh, El Camino Real where it ties into Jordan Avenue. And here you have the four levels of the proposed commercial building. The site is about, about an acre, just under an acre. It's at point zero eight, or zero point eight-four acres or thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-seven square feet. The building is four stories, as you can see from the four floor plans that are here. The first three, three levels of the building are a commercial space. There's forty-five thousand and eighty-two square feet of office space that's being proposed. And there are four residential units on the upper level. There is sufficient parking for this project for not only the office space, but also the residential units. There are four levels of underground parking. That is, as I mentioned earlier, accessed off of Jordan Avenue. You can see the various levels of the underground parking in these floor levels. And if we go to a section through the building, you can see how that, um, the levels of the underground parking relate to the building itself. There's a total of, let me see here, two-hundred-and-thirteen parking spaces in the project that are being proposed. And as I mentioned earlier, the parking does comply with our city's parking standards for office uses and the residential uses. Here's another cross-section through the building, um, just giving you a different appearance of the building and how the lower levels of parking relate to the upper levels of the office space and the residential units. Then we'll move on to the elevations that are being proposed. The first elevation on the screen is the elevation from the El Camino Real. You can see that this, um, provides the frontage for the, um, primarily the office element portion of the building. And then going to the opposite end of the building takes us to the south elevation. So this faces, um, away from the El Camino Real. Then going around to the side of the building from the Jordan Avenue, uh, side of the, the site, this is the elevation from that, that level. You can see on the left-hand side of this elevation is the location for the, um, the underground parking is accessed. The white area, I believe, there is the location of the, uh, opening to the underground garage. The other area, the, the horizontal linear area there with the two large windows that are, um, behind the, the bank of the, um, broken-up massing and windows on the building are the location of the office spaces. And then you can see that the upper floor of this building has a area that is where the, uh, proposed residential units will be located. And you can see that the residential units and the design of those has been, um, modulated to give some relief to that upper level. Then this takes us to the west elevation. This would be the side of the building that faces the current structure that's under construction at forty-eight eighty El Camino Real. That's a five-story building. The applicant in this instance is seeking a density bonus. They're not requesting any additional, uh, market rate units for the density bonus, but what they're hoping for is an exception to the height of the structure. It is an on-menu request from forty-five feet to fifty-six feet for the upper portion of the building. And here are some kind of drawings of the building from different angles, different street perspectives of the site. And then that takes us to a corner elevation review of the, the building plus sort of an interior view of the site on that topper, top screen there that shows us that you're looking down towards the El Camino Real from where the garage spaces are accessed. As I mentioned, they are seeking a density bonus request. The fifth unit that is being proposed as part of this project is actually located off-site at eight-one-eight Jordan Avenue. And this map shows you the relationship between where that fifth unit is located and the project site. This will be an affordable unit. I think it was indicated this would be at the low-income level and it would make twenty percent of the project units, or the units in the project, affordable. Therefore, they're entitled to one, one incentive. The density bonus regulations do provide for the consideration of an off-site affordable unit. That will be subject to your feedback and recommendations and ultimately the city council approval, but it can be considered. It's not a requirement that all of the affordable units be built on-site. And this is a project, the first one that I'm aware of here in Los Altos at least, that would be proposing this combination of factors. Again, this is a study session, so you're taking a look at some, uh, bigger picture things to discuss and provide feedback on regarding the, the project and the proposed uses. Similar comments and questions to go over like with the last project on Main Street. We kind of wrapped up the questions for the Planning Commission to, to address is the, a question regarding the off-sighting of the affordable unit. I think the applicant and staff would both appreciate your consideration of that and your comments and thoughts and feedback on, on that, um, concept. And with that, that carries us to the presentation by the applicant unless the commission has any questions for staff.
Sally?
Well, first question is, can I get one of the cups? Because we don't have any up here, I don't think, or I can't. Oh, no, there are. Never mind. I just couldn't see them. Thank you, before I start coughing. So, question is, it talks about the setbacks, uh, for rear structures. Well, it proposed at twenty feet for less than thirty feet in height and then, um, greater thirty feet height, um, at forty foot. But the bulk of the, the building is actually much more setback than that, it seems like. It's just that protuberance. I'm sure there's an architectural term that, that, uh, other than protuberance. But, um, the, the building is by and far quite largely setback, right?
You're talking about the rear setback. I called up on the screen, I hope everyone can see it. The, where the garage entrance is located, you can see that there is. I don't know the exact distance between, um, the major portion of the building and the rear, rear, uh, property line, but you, as you noted, um, there is a rather large setback there.
Okay, thank you.
Eros?
The, just clarifying, the sixty-one point six, uh, feet for the elevator tower, that technically wouldn't be a variance because it's above the, I always forget. It's, it's twelve feet above the top, and so that's fine.
Uh, it would be the twelve feet on top of whatever the highest point of the building would be. So fifty-six feet plus the twelve feet would be sixty-eight. And I think they're requesting sixty-one.
Okay, got it. Just clarifying.
A two-part question. What is, um, the size of the proposed affordable, um, alternative housing in relation to the new, um, units that are being constructed? And then a follow-up question, which is more for council. Like, what, how are cities doing this effectively? My question is, you know, how do you, can someone buy a dumpy shed of very small size and, um, build? And that's, I'm not suggesting that's what's happening here. I, I want to understand, um, because I don't think that's happening here. But I want to understand how cities are, are utilizing this, um, feature where you can identify some off-site affordable housing in place of sort of new construction.
So getting to your, the second part of your question, I would say this is an unusual approach. It's not something that's frequently done. And so I think it's something that you have some discretion to look at whether or not it's appropriate and it's consistent with the other units, which gets to the first part of your question, which I'll let, I'll let John cover.
I'm going to defer to the applicant to answer that question.
But just to finish, um, I have seen jurisdictions utilize off-site units on occasion to satisfy the affordable housing requirement. But it's, it's not, it's fairly atypical.
The, the one thing that, um, some cities' density bonus regulations allow for is that the, um, affordable units can actually be located outside of the limits of the jurisdiction. In Los Altos, however, our council, when they adopted the density bonus regulations, said that any affordable units that are located off-site shall be within the city limits. I, I think the most, the, the most egregious example of that, I recall one project on the Monterey Peninsula where there were affordable units for the Pebble Beach area, actually built in Casterville, about thirty miles away, so. But that's kind of an extreme of what can be done.
But, but, this would be, um, this would be in place of the fees. So, so if, if council didn't, or if, if we didn't say that we wanted this option, then the alternative would be that they pay the fee, not that they would include another unit.
No, the, the, the tricky part is the project has to have at least five units to qualify for the density bonus and the incentives. So if they don't have that fifth unit included in the project some way, they don't qualify to
I see.
have a consideration given to a density bonus. And it's incentives and waivers and so forth.
I see.
I don't have questions. I thought this was a, I, I really appreciated the, the table on page two, which we've asked for, and I find immensely helping all the time when we talk about what's proposed and what's required or allowed. It allowed me to really get a grip on that, so thank you for that. If we have no more questions for staff, we'll let the applicant start his presentation by saying how big the average unit is in the building and how big the unit off-site is so we can get Renate's question answered.
I'm hard of hearing, so I can't hear everything you say. I have two, I have one for myself, but I have two larger sheets. And I think it's easier to read. Do you, is your size this big?
No.
Do you want this?
Well, actually, well, we're just looking for a square footage. So how large is this fifth unit? And she would take a look at the larger two.
The BMR?
Yes.
Mr. Vidovic?
Twelve hundred.
It's twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred square.
Mr. Vidovic, could you state your name for the record since we're?
I'm sorry, John Vidovic.
Thank you.
Do you want this? It's easier to look at.
And now you can have your official starting time.
So, the, the first thing I want to say, uh, since we have somebody who has canvassed the neighborhood back there, and I've driven there many times on Jordan Avenue, uh, Jordan Avenue is becoming very, very crowded. And one of the residents suggested that they put a roundabout there just to slow the traffic down. And when we did the gardens, we invested in traffic calming measures. And I want to say it because I will forget. And I, I think it's actually a really, really good idea. And with more density there, uh, when I go there, the cars are going very fast. I think it would be good for the neighborhood. I, I, I see that we're building an office building there and, and we have a lot of residential. We have a, a three-point-eight-acre office building, that, uh, complex that's being eliminated. And this is a, a new, modern office. I think we have a lot of residential there. And there is a particular residential next to us that has setbacks that are now non-conforming, I believe, very close. And I think to put another residential building next to it makes it difficult for both the new residents and the existing residents that'll go there. So I think office kind of plunked in the center of, of, of a lot of high-density residential makes it a little bit more livable. The office doesn't have traffic, um, on the weekends and it doesn't have parking requirements at night in the neighborhood. You know, these developments that have gated parking are going to create visitors that will have to park in the neighborhoods. So I think the office is, is very compatible. We have four units on the top of the office. And we, the last project we did on the gardens, which is on, on San Antonio, we had off-site BMRs. The council allowed us to have, uh, units in the back, which they thought were better for the BMRs than, uh, luxury units. And, uh, this has four large units. So I think that we have, we, we looked and we wanted to have something close so it was part of the project. And we bought a unit for a million and a half dollars. You have all the information on it. And Kathy can talk to you about it. She knows all about it. It has a yard. And, let's see, I don't, Ken Hayes did the architecture and it looks pretty good to us. There is a, a picture on one of these where you can see the relationship to this building with the residential on top, to the existing building that's next door. And I think it will buffer that. I think the housing on top helps put a hat on this building. So it's, it, it comes in, it has balconies, and it kind of tops the building off. I don't have anything else. The, the drawings speak for themselves, I think.
Questions for the applicant?
Yeah, question for the architect, actually.
He's not here. He, he went on vacation, so.
Oh.
You have to ask me, I guess.
Okay.
Or John Biggs.
On A two-point-four, um, on the residential level, on the fourth level, um, you have the ele, the two elevators and then behind the two elevators, you have the roof garden. Is there, there's no barrier or wall from indoor to outdoor? It just kind of flows out?
A two-point-four, that rectangular, uh, piece of property on, on the top of the roof?
Yeah, if you, behind the elevators, it looks like you can just walk right outside and there's no.
You can, you can walk out there. But you're asking if there's a barrier so you don't fall off the roof? Is that what you're asking?
Or just to go from inside to outside, since?
If, this is the architect and I, I look at it, I debated. You have this circle around the elevator where it's completely open. And, uh, you can circulate to that, that garden area. I, I'm not so sure I like it that much either, but it's his idea. The way it is, it is open. There'll have to be glass or something, a glass door, something that
Yeah.
prevents the weather from coming in.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's what I figured.
Yeah. Or there's, there's, yeah, I think you'd have to have some glass there.
Yeah. That was the only one I have, only question I have.
Renate?
No.
Sally?
I had a question, but I'm not sure the one you could answer, maybe you or John. I couldn't figure out what the material was that we're wrapping the columns in the ground level colonade. I don't think you're going to use the board-finished concrete there, the dimension is too small, and-
I actually think it is board-finished concrete. I think it is.
Okay, well, if it turns out that it's not, please email John, and he will let us all know.
I, I will, but I think the architect did put board-finished concrete there. I remember discussing it with him. It could be stone, it doesn't have to be that. He, and that's Ken Hayes. We have some other speakers that, did you do a card? You're part of the applicant, just, just take my time.
So, may I speak?
Of course. Introduce yourself.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Jia Chen, and that's my Chinese name, and I go by Jane in the United States, even though my boss likes to always call me my Chinese name, and he always pronounces it wrong. Anyways, back to the project. So I did the neighborhood outreach since June 2019. I'm talked to, I feel like I've talked to like 200 neighbors around this site already, even though I can't speak for every one of them, but I think I get a general idea of what people like about the project, and also some of their concerns, because some of the items got repeated and repeated when we talked to them. The first thing is traffic, because as we all know, El Camino has a lot of traffic during rush hour, and the residents are concerned about our next-door construction getting in 20-something residential people coming in and not having enough parking. So their streets will be invaded, that's one of their biggest concern, and after they know that we're going to put office, and only four residential on top, they're kind of relieved, and I talked to them, saying that we have 200-something underground parking. They feel happy about it, so they support us putting office there, because they think that it will alleviate their traffic issues. And also, the second concern that they have is, if we put too much residential, because at first, they don't know what we're going to put there, and they assume that we're going to put a lot of residential. They are concerned about their kids not being able to get into schools, because if we have more residential, then the space is very limited for school. But after I told them, oh, we're going to put office, they feel more happy about it, and they said that, oh, if it's only four, high and residential, that might bring up their house value as well, so they feel happy that we're only putting four on the top, and also it's going to be good for their future appraisal of the home value. And some of the small items that they brought up will be, are we going to put any retail, or what kind of tenants are we going to get in, and also some landscaping issues that they are concerned about. But I told them that it's all going to be taken care of in the future, and I can't say for sure what is going to come in, because we haven't built it yet, but it's going to be a good tenant, and also we're going to put a lot of good landscaping there. And actually, all the, one of the person, people that I talked to actually really, really likes our project by looking at our plans, and her name is Carolyn Lawrence. She lived right next to, right behind the project on Jordan Avenue, but because of health issues, she can't come and support us today. But she signed something that I passed out, and she really likes the pedestrian feel of the sidewalk. So I guess that's all I have to say, and that's all. Thank you.
Any questions for Jane?
Are we going to have someone talk a little bit more about the BMR unit and how it relates, the relationship to the units that you're putting in, in terms of-
Relate by size?
Yeah.
This project by design, we're taking the top floor of a unit and putting a few very large units. It's luxury housing. It's not affordable housing, and we have an affordable housing obligation, so we're buying, we tried to buy a unit that had proximity to the project, and as close as we could, and that's what we did. The unit has a yard, a really nice yard, and it's in a nice complex. It's an expensive unit, because everything is expensive. We, you know, we envision that it would have a teacher, a firefighter, a police officer, somebody that, that would be part of the community, that, that the housing is an impediment for them to be part of the community. And we have done other projects where the housing we've built is not suitable for BMR or low income, just because it was luxury, and we've paid fees, because it is incongruent to put sometimes a BMR in a unit that's, that's generally built in, you know, a luxury. There's only four units there, and we could build four, you know, all affordable units up there, but it's just the design that we've tried to do, and that's the answer.
Do you have specific issues that you want to ask about on this?
Yeah, so, since you've, you said you've done this before, what I'm trying to understand, I assume these units on top are for sale. This will be for sale, the, this additional unit, you will sell it at some point, first person-
The BMR unit, the city can do whatever they want with it. We'll sell it, we'll rent it, we'll let you have it, and you can rent it. We're, we're, I would like to see somebody that serves the city, like a firefighter, a policeman, or a teacher, have that unit. And I, I think it's a lot better for them to own it, because then they're part of the community, and you can restrict their appreciation for 20 or 30 years, but they should, they should eventually, if they stay there long enough, they should have the unit. And maybe John can move in there, I don't know, he's just like, but somebody, somebody, you, you know, we have people that commute here to serve the city, and I think it's suitable for that.
So I guess then the question for the city is, is, does the city acquire the, does the city has, I know that we have this pool of units that are BMR, but do we, does the city own any that-
No, the city doesn't own any of the units. There, I really can't think of any that are rental units, they're all ownership units. I know the council of late has really been interested in acquiring rental units, because there's a feeling that those remain affordable for a much longer period of time and provide affordability for, to a greater number of people. And in terms of the term for the units, I know the last project, the applicant agreed to a term of 55 years, and the council's asked us if a longer term, even in perpetuity, could be achieved, and our attorney's office is looking at that.
Enough information?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. I have three requests to speak. The first-
I'd also like to speak, I don't, I need to fill out the form later.
Well, if you want to speak, we'll start, fill out the form, pass it up here, and we'll, we'll deal with it. So the first person will be Catherine Tomine.
Hi, good evening. I'm Catherine Tomineau. I'm a Realtor with Cobble Banker, and I'm the person that sold Jordan. I, I would say that we need diversified housing. Workforce housing is great, but we need fluidity in the, in the housing market, which allows move-ups, there's, there's a demand for housing of all levels. And so, that's why I think it's really nice that we have these luxury units. Also, something struck me when I was reading the paper today, you know, they approved the Coyote Valley purchase, and City Councilman Sergio Jimenez said, you know, his concept of open space while growing up in East San Jose was limited to the patio outside his affordable housing unit. And I just thought, you know, most of the housing that we're giving for affordable housing, it's, it's in new projects, and new projects by definition, the space is very limited, because the land is so expensive. I just sold a unit down in South Los Altos at Toyon Farms. It's 16 acres with 60 units, and if you apportion that per unit, it's over a quarter of an acre, a unit. And I think something similar is what we're providing on Jordan Avenue. This is not a condo, it's a PUD, it's fee simple ownership, so you would own the land underneath. It's got a garage, it's got a really large-sized yard. The yard is about 1,600 square feet. So, you know, I think it's, it's very commodious, it's very spacious, it's not something that you're shoehorned into. I think it's very, very good quality living. I would like to live there. Also, I think it's, it's great for, you know, people that have families to have a yard. It's very hard to live on the El Camino, because there's really no outside space for your kids to ride their bikes, or, you know, go to the park, you'd have to go off-site for that. So anyway, that's just my comment. I think that the Jordan Avenue BMR is a very, very suitable alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Abby Arons.
So that leaves me only having to say Los Altos, according to the rules?
Yes.
I am really excited about this off-site unit. It seems like all of our condo complexes, as Kathy has said, do not provide families with great living. We keep using and requesting smaller and smaller units, but truly, a huge new, need is to allow families to live in affordable units. When you look at what is going on out there, I have clients in that complex, clients with children. It's a wonderful neighborhood. They have facilities, they have various programs and holiday events, there's a pool, there's areas of green grass outside of the unit itself, and whoever gets this unit will be part of a community, as though they had purchased a home in a neighborhood. I wish we could do more of these, rather than just attempt to shoehorn everybody into small condos. I think we've gone the wrong direction with it. I may have started it with the first affordable condo, and yes, it was small, and yes, that occupant has been in that unit for over 14 years, has never resold it. We have a great program for people to be able to get into affordable units, we just don't have enough of them that have family availability. It's a great unit. To put them up on top, I think, as she pointed out, where do you ride a bike? Where do you walk? Where do you feel like your child's at all safe? I hope you'll accept this alternative. I think it's a great one. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sue Russell.
Okay, well, speaking for the League of Women Voters, I couldn't be more diametrically opposed to what Abby just said. I want to follow up on what Renate asked, and say that most cities that allow someone to do an off-site specifically write it into their ordinance. For example, in Mountain View, it's written in that the obligation of the developer, if he's going to do something off-site, has to be at least as burdensome and should be more onerous than doing the units onsite, because there is obviously an advantage to having the diversity of having people with lower incomes live with other people. So, I mean, if, if there's an advantage for him doing this off-site, then maybe he could provide two units, because the city should be looking at the equity of what, the equivalency of what he's offering to provide. This is a 40-year-old building, it's 1,200 square feet. I don't know how big these luxury units are, but I'm, I know they're a lot larger than 1,200 square feet, so we're not really comparing apples and apples in terms of what the developer's offering, so that's very troublesome to me. I did want to comment on the perpetuity, that other cities are allowing ownership in perpetuity, so I think that shouldn't be a problem. And then the other thing I wanted to comment is that lately, the direction of the city has been that we prefer smaller units. We're not really looking for these large luxury units, there's a feeling we're having too many of those. So I would encourage the Planning Commission to think about what happened with the other project, where you allowed 28 units instead of 21 units, and they were much smaller, you allowed a higher density than you, than you had to allow, and you got a lot more BMR units as well. And, you know, some families do, do live in these places. People live in San Francisco, people live in urban environments, they don't all have to have a big yard, just because they have children.
Thank you, Sue. And the last speaker, unless someone's going to bring up a card to me, is Andrew Salope.
Before I start, I want to say that I just heard what Abby had to say, and I don't think there are any kids in the, in the complex. Actually, let me back up a bit. I live-
Why don't you raise the microphone?
I live in eight, I live in 810 Jordan Avenue, which is next to the eight, the 818 unit. I'm here on behalf of Las Casitas Two Homeowners Association, which is the group of people who owns that collection of planned unit developments. So before I make my points, there are no kids in that complex, so I don't know what you're talking about, as far as-
Actually, you need to address us.
Okay, I'm sorry. If I heard it correctly, she was talking about those units in Las Casitas Two Homeowners Association. So everything she said, I disagree with, because I live there and I know the truth. But I'll just want to make that comment. Second of all, the two issues regarding the homeowners association is, one, the growing traffic density is a concern to us. It's an increasing public safety concern, so the additional 200 spots would be helpful. But even without that unit, it's already a problem with a lot of density, so we'll like to see that there's attention being given to the traffic, the density of traffic on Jordan Avenue. The second issue is the BMR status. Can one homeowner unilaterally declare their property as a BMR and link it to another development? There's a lot of concern in the homeowners association about this development, so we look forward to addressing, drilling down into, make this, this. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I have one question. Could you clarify, please, which homeowners association you're with?
I'm with the Las Casitas, Las Casitas Two Homeowners Association, which is 800 to 826 Jordan.
Okay.
That includes Carolyn, who was mentioned earlier, and all those people.
Great, thank you.
And then the last speaker is Robert Maury, on last-
Let me correct myself. They have an eight-unit complex. I'm talking about the huge complex next door to them.
Okay. Robert, would you come up to the microphone, please?
Thank you. My name is Robert Maury, and I'm a Los Altos resident. We moved in about 15 years ago, and part of the reason why we moved in was because of the community, the great schools, and of course, the, the community feel, the neighborhood, the downtown feel. And I'm speaking in favor of this project, because I do feel that it maintains that same quality of the community. I like the fact that it's commercial, first and foremost, mostly commercial, and I think it's appropriate for the El Camino area. And I also feel that the, the housing on top, the four units, fits into that low-density model that Los Altos is known for, and I think makes Los Altos an appealing area to live in. One of the things that I noticed was that the project offered over 200 spaces of parking, and I, I think that's a big concern with a lot of these projects in the area, because, you know, as it's been pointed out, there's oftentimes overflow that goes into the neighborhoods on Jordan. I've got friends that live in the area, and there's concern about too much housing in the area, too much density, and that'll lead to cars parked on the street, difficulty finding parking in front of their own houses, things of that sort. So I do appreciate the fact that there's a lot of parking offered for the, the commercial project tenants there. And in addition to that, I, I think that the fact that it is commercial means that, you know, during the day, it'll be crowded, but after, after work, in the evenings, especially in the weekends, you know, there's, there really isn't going to be anyone there, and I think that, you know, I'm not sure if the intention of the developer is to allow that parking to be used, but inevitably, I think that those open spaces will help with the local community as well. The fact that there's only four housing units on top, I can't really speak for the BMR, but the fact that there's only four housing units on top, I, I think that's a wonderful thing. Again, I mentioned, part of the reason why my wife and I moved into the community was because of the fact that Los Altos has a certain character to it. It has a character of openness, not- It has a character of openness, not having the congestion that some of the other communities around it has, and the fact that there's only, you know, four units, I think, would, would help with that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I don't have any other requests to speak on this, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will discuss. And Sally, would you be willing to start?
Sure. And despite the, well, there's pros and cons to this project, and there's a lot of really good things, but I just want to clarify some of the things I might say. I'm not actually cranky tonight. It might sound like I am when I give some of my feedback, but it's just a couple interesting projects in a row so far for these study sessions. So, so first of all, let me focus on what I think is really promising about this, this development. So first of all, thank you for the, the extra parking. I mean, you've heard that from the speakers, and I want to reiterate, I think that's really helpful. I also think it's very exciting to see that, I believe I read that this is proposed to be at minimum lead silver, and if we can, you know, up it even more, that would be great. Anything we can do to improve our footprint. I think that actually, the, the rear setbacks overall are fairly generous. I know that it looks small, but that's actually not the bulk of the building. The bulk of the building is quite a bit forward from the rear setbacks, so I think that's also very positive. And I would say that when we view this application, when you actually submit it and it comes back to us eventually, I would be amenable to considering an off-site BMR. But I think there's a way, actually, news to me, it was before I was on Planning Commission, that we've done this before on San Antonio, and so maybe we need to look at how that was arranged. It seems to me there should be a way to make it fair. So for example, what would the in-lu fee be? And you don't want someone, and again, I'm not saying that this is what's happening, but you don't want a one and a half million dollar BMR, but the in-lu fee would have been five million or something, you know? So there's, there's, I think, a way to potentially make it equitable, potentially also of commensurate finishing. I mean, it looked like, some of those photos looked like it was in good shape, but other photos looked a little dated. So we can look at ways to make that fair, and maybe we've already got those ways if we've done this before. So I would be amenable to it, but not as a cop-out for, you know, building the other ones there. So with that said, let me go on to some of the other things. We're really going to need, again, this is a stay session, so I understand, we're going to really need to see a landscaping plan. I don't have a sense at all of how this is going to look inviting with an abundance of green and, and the type of things that we look for. And then I actually don't really, from these elevations, see an obvious front. So I, you know, that, I think we like to see entrances and understand where we go in the building, so I think that is missing. And I, I think overall, this, to me, is a very cold, industrial, and unappealing sort of look. It's very, it would be very unusual for Los Altos. There's very, there's really no natural materials, and I actually wonder how you would achieve your, your lead rating with all those windows. I mean, maybe you can do it with the right kind of glass or something, but, you know, there's just, there's a lot of glass here. This, this doesn't look to me, it almost looks like a hospital or a, you know, a museum. I don't know. It just, it looks, it doesn't look like what we usually see in this town. With that said, I, I do think that the overall context of commercial and then some limited amount of residential could potentially make sense. It might also help with some of the other residential projects going up in the neighborhood to actually have that ground floor be retail commercial, not necessarily office space. I think that would help bookend some destinations to walk, whether to eat or to have some activity. So I think there's a lot of potential here, but, but stylistically, I, I think this is kind of off for us. So that's it.
Ronit?
So I, 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 there's a lot that I like about this building. I do actually like the contemporary, contemporary look of the office building. I, I also think it's a great space for office, and I think it, I'm not surprised, it gives a lot of the neighbors relief, because we've been hearing about, you know, the intensification of housing on El Camino, and we don't have dozens of residents complaining about it. So I think it's a really great space for office, and I like the idea of a contemporary office space. And a lot of Los Altans have said, have said they want to be able to have their companies in our town, and there isn't the kind of large space that they need. So this feels like it's a great fit. I do think that the floor to se, I, it's hard to tell, and we're in design review, so this is really a conversation, but it's, it is hard to tell where the glass ends, if it's like floor to ceiling. And in office spaces, and I know there's another one on El Camino that really has just a ton of glass, and what you end up seeing is like the bottom of chairs and wires and desks, and there's a, whenever I drive past, I, I think maybe we should have had them close that up a little bit more, so that you're not sort of in it. But I do like the look. It does actually kind of remind me of a museum, but I like that. In terms of having the access on Jordan, I also think that provides a lot of relief. We have so many entry points-
The car access.
The car access on El Camino, and it's, it feels like it's, we are creating an untenable situation. So I think that that, that provides relief, and it's actually pretty deep into Jordan. So I like that. I appreciate the lead silver effort. And I do think, I, I would like to see housing here. And I do think that the way it's done puts a little, like you said, hat on the, on the top, and it is recessed, so you get that private enjoyment of those spaces. But I think, like, the case has to be made so that the city is getting a good deal of equivalency, because these, this, this housing makes up ten thousand, I think, three hundred square feet, so each unit's about twenty-five hundred. And we're talking about a significant, you know, half that in a BMR of an older, possibly very tired building. And so I would hate for someone who thinks they're getting a BMR to also be buying into, you know, a lot of overhead in terms of what they're going to have to put into a, a place. So I think a case has to be made that the city's really getting a good deal here, and I don't, I don't see that now. But I, I think it can be made. I'd like for it to be made, because I would like to see this housing on top. It just doesn't feel equivalent at this stage. But I also agree that when we, you know, an alternative that they, they could have done is just made smaller units and put a couple BMRs on top and get the same, and, you know, same height that they are looking for. But I do agree that sometimes these luxury units, no matter how much you put a percentage down, is not really affordable. It's not bringing in or making available more housing. And I do appreciate that this unit that they're offering has all this outdoor space, which is really rare for BMR units, particularly on El Camino. But I just think they need to be more of it. In terms of the landscaping, I agree there needs to, I think there just hasn't been drawn out. I'm cautiously optimistic. I'm not sure, but I, I think that it's the same folks behind the project on San Antonio, the Stanford. And in my mind, that is one of the best executed commercial buildings on a very heavily trafficked area, because the landscaping is so inviting and creates such a nice pedestrian experience for people. They didn't, it's not like the Schwab Building, where they have an office, they threw some housing on top, and there's like a few planters. That place really did a great job of landscaping. I, I'd like to see that in this. I, I strongly suspect, I hope it will do that. And I also think there's an opportunity in the rear to be more generous with the landscaping available for both the office tenants and also the residences, residential tenants. Maybe somehow enliven it or make it, instead of it's just a driveway with some green on each side, actually make it feel like part, because it's just, it's a huge portion of the lot, so it feels like maybe you can make that part of the communal space somehow. I'd like to see that more robust landscaping and possibly communal space. Hard to tell what the materials are going to be. I'm certain that if it's of the same sort of quality that we see in that other building, it's going to be of a very high quality, but we will need to see that in that next phase and have a better understanding. I think some of the comments that were made earlier are right about not making it feel quite so cold. And I think that's pretty much it. That's what I've got.
Mayrus?
Okay. I think the project has a lot of aspects that are successful. The way that it has been laid out, so the orientation, the driveway, the parking, I think that was all handled really well. I think there's a few things that should be addressed in terms of the design. So the fourth level, which is the residential level, doesn't feel residential to me. I think that the fourth level would really benefit from different materials and, and different architectural accents. I kind of said this with the last project as well. I think we're starting to see this type of language for residential projects in Los Altos, so I just think that we should try to be consistent with that. I also think the, the roof garden that I mentioned before, the fourth level, I think it really needs that barrier, indoor/outdoor, between indoor/outdoor. The roof plane that you have that kind of goes across the entire fourth floor, I think it weighs the building down. I just think that there's an opportunity to maybe have that plane follow the perimeter of the building and not really extend out fully, kind of go in and out at different places. So I think that would help with the heaviness. The entry and the entry plaza, that line of, of just square concrete columns with the concrete cladding, it just doesn't really feel like a, like a 2019 building. So I'd really look at that. I think I, I would look at architectural aspects that you could put between the columns, you know, screening that you could implement, seating, landscaping, I think maybe putting a wall in place of, you know, three or four columns. I think that there's just stronger concepts than just a row of, of columns. I also think exploring that, that plaza, that entry plaza would help the corner, because I think a lot of people are going to be driving down El Camino, and that's going to be a focal point. And then I'll just wrap up by saying, I think in terms of the off-site affordable unit, I'd argue that I think every unit in Los Altos is a luxury unit. So I don't really understand that comment, but I, I think the best thing to do would be to do a comparison for the next time, basically showing what five units on the fourth floor would be, and so comparing one of those units with the unit that you're proposing. Because I think a lot of the comments that were said, I think that it's all, the value needs to be quantified some way. So I think comparing the two, so that we can see what we really are dealing with, I think that's, that would make me feel better about making a decision about whether or not we should do this. So I don't, I don't know if that's a helpful response, but I don't know if I have the information yet to decide. And that was it.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. So I'll start with commercial, with a little residential. We have a lot of all residential projects coming down El Camino Real, and we've had residents talk about how they're missing the commercial aspect, the ability to have some services or something else to do on the ground level. And in fact, when we had our joint meeting with City Council, we talked about thinking about the El Camino corridor as not turning over completely to be a hundred percent residential, to protect some of the feeling that there's a reason for people to go there. And so I can support this as a concept having offices and then some small amount of residential on top. I believe that the extra parking is a wonderful thing, but what it does, which I think Mayrus brought up, is normally the parking is what limits the number of units, because we find there's a balance point. And here, there's a bonus of parking, which means you could potentially put two units or an extra unit on the top to get the incentive you needed and not worry that you're going to have to do the parking. I appreciate, I may be the only one who's verbalizing it, that it isn't a puzzle system, that this is real underground garage where people can actually drive in and drive out I'm concerned about the, the architecture is very stark, and it's very stylized, and I happen to like it, but this is not a like-it situation. What I think is important is that particularly at the pedestrian level, it's very stark, and I think we've been referring to it in different ways. I feel there's an opportunity here, because there's a colonnade, that the columns can be decorative elements potentially. Mayrus talked about introducing other parts to the colonnade, street furniture of some sort. I'm thinking color for sure, lush landscaping, because the pictures are very preliminary. They're stylized, they're showing us trees. I know that the landscaping will be more at the lower level as well, but particularly that open corner, which people will be driving by at high speed, because it's El Camino Real, it would be good to have an announcement of the corner, differentiating it from the colonnade in some way, architecturally, I believe. And I have to disagree with Mayrus. I actually like that the edge of the roof holds the perimeter of the building. It's, I think that's chocolate or vanilla. I do think that we will need to see careful detailing, which the Hays Office is usually very good at, relative to the glass. I think an important piece of what Commissioner Badner talked about was, when you have floor-to-ceiling glass, even if it's articulated, that bottom section is looking at not the nicest thing, so maybe there's spandrel glass there and transparent above, so you can get the architectural feeling of the, the gleam of the material without actually looking at the backs of people's computer stuff on the floor and their umbrellas and purses and whatnot. I think that there's a differentiation here that I would say is different than what we looked at the previous project, which was in our downtown core, where the village character is critical. Here, this is a different feeling. It's the El Camino corridor, and so I'm much less concerned about the same vocabulary being used for the residential floor as, with some modifications as it is on the commercial floors, because it's a different feeling. If this was on, it wouldn't be, but if this was in the downtown village, I would agree completely that the residential should be differentiated. Here, I think it's less important. As to the off-site BMR, I, I believe that the units that were in the project that Mr. Vidovic talked about were in the same property. They were in the rear of the property, where a new building was in the front, in terms of BMR, and they were existing. And so that felt more compelling as an discussion point for whether the BMR was part of the project. It was on the same piece of land. So if it's happened before, or we want it to happen, and we want to allow that to happen, I believe that, I am in complete concurrence with all four of us, that the parity of the units, the, what the value is that you're getting by having an off-site unit, what the quality of it is, sales price irrelevant, because as someone pointed out, there is no such thing as affordable housing in- there is no such thing as affordable housing in Los Altos, even when it's purportedly so. I think the value of it being off-site is, to me, irrelevant, so much as if you were giving a project where there are four 2,500 square foot units, and this one is half the size, when we see it in a multiple-unit building, when there are a lot of units, we have an area where there are small, medium, and large at regular price level, and then we have small, medium, and large usually mixed in at the BMR level. So here, we're not getting, there is not an opportunity for the mix. So either there should be a 2,500 square foot unit that's a BMR off-site, or you get it onsite in a way that makes perhaps a slightly different mix. That's one approach you could try. So I'm okay with the lid edge. I'm okay with off-site if we get a metric, as Mayrus was talking about. If we get some kind of metric, is how we can define value to value, what Sue Russell talked about. I think the entry needs to be defined better. I think the pedestrian experience on the ground floor, not only with the landscaping, but also with the architecture, needs to respond to pedestrian movement. Because since there's a colonnade, it actually is encouraging people to see this as human scale, and I think that's something that could be worked with very well. On the whole, I'm very excited about this project. Something we've talked about for years is getting really high-quality, fine design in town. And we have very few examples of it. Ken Hayes has another building in town that was very successful in that same genre. And so I feel this is an exciting opportunity here as well. So, do you guys have enough material to take away with you to, and cogitate with, and then Ken can talk to John and he can look at the tapes?
And I had, and I had one thing I realized I forgot, and it, you've probably already gotten there anyway, but particularly when you're looking at your north elevation, which is going to be really close to another new big building going in there, that again presents the glass, I mean, you don't necessarily want all that glass looking at another tall building. So again, how you address that side of the building is, it's not the north elevation that the north will be facing. Anyway, the point is, just make sure that the side that's facing the tall building there, you know, it's, you're not going to want all that glass, and you're only, I don't know how far away you're going to be. I think it's the north elevation, but.
And so the other thing I've always bring up at these projects is when there's a lot of plaster, when there's a lot of stucco, I always ask that there be some consideration of expansion joints, so that you can mitigate what potentially would be an aesthetic problem, but also break down the larger panels into more human scale. So. Last comments from anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much for the information. I look forward to seeing this come back. Does anybody need a break? No? Okay. We'll plow on forward. So the next thing is item three, which is planning commission minutes. I, John, I have a problem on page two. I don't believe that anybody, and no one on the current dais remembers saying anything about, starting with the 750-foot radius. We were all pretty sure that we didn't want it above 500 after Renit made the initial comment. And I know I certainly would not have said, make it 750, because I couldn't have agreed with her more. So maybe you should just delete that or check the tape and see if someone actually did say it. Any other comments on the content? In that case, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes of the planning commission from October 17.
Can I get a second? Second by Renit. All in favor?
Aye.
I pose no, which passes 4-0. And now for the public hearing, which is on 444 and 450 First Street. Before we have the staff report, I'll point out that I have two requests to speak. If anybody else wants to speak on it, they should please fill out one of these forms and pass it up here to the dais. And now with that, John, can we have a report?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Brestak, members of the commission. You have a public hearing this evening for a project at 444, 450 First Street in the downtown. And we will begin by sharing with you some overhead photos showing the location of the building. It's near the intersection of First Street, San Antonio Road, and Foothill Boulevard. It fronts, or the site fronts on First Street, but it does back up to Foothill Expressway. And here's a little different angle of the location of the site. It's the area there to the left of the existing multifamily structure on First Street, the white building with the tile roof. Here is one street elevation of the proposed project, just to give you a sense of what the project will look like in the streetscape. And then the applicant is requesting a, or proposing a development that includes a request for design review approval and approval of a subdivision tentative map for this new multifamily building. It's on a .35 acre site, around 15,246 square feet. And the site is designated in our downtown commercial and the general plan, and part of the downtown multiple-family CD/R3 zone district. The project itself includes 26 condominium units, can't say that this hour, condominium units in a four-story building with two levels of underground parking that are accessed from First Street. The condominium map that is being requested would allow for the subdivision of the airspace for the condominium units themselves, the 26 units, and then the common area along with the parking area. Of the 26 units that are part of this proposal, the applicant is proposing that four of them be affordable or BMR units. One unit is being proposed at the low-income level, and three units are being proposed at the moderate-income level. There is no density bonus request, because we really do not have a density in our downtown area. It, the density is achieved by compliance with our site development standards, setback requirements, height limits, parking requirements, and so forth. So they're not asking for any additional market rate units, but they are seeking some incentives and waivers for the project. The requested incentives include an increase in the height from 35 feet to 46 feet. That's an 11-foot increase in the height of the structure, and that's part of our online menu, or, yeah, online?
Menu.
On-menu, thank you. On-menu list of exceptions that an applicant can request. They are seeking a reduced parking per the density bonus requirements. The parking requirement for this project per zoning code would be 59 spaces. They're proposing 51 spaces, 45 of which are regular spaces, and six are tandem spaces. They're also seeking a waiver. This is a reduction in the 60% soft surfaces at the front and rear yards of the property, down to 25%. And I believe that a lot of the reason behind that request is to comply with our fire department access requirements at the sides and rears of the property, so that when there, if there is an emergency, heaven forbid, that the fire department would be able to properly access the building. They're also requesting a reduction in the rear yard setback. It's an exception from 10 feet to eight feet. And they are seeking that through our public benefits program that is part of the code. The public benefits that they are offering is a really increase in the number of on-street parking spaces by the elimination of a number of curb cuts, and working cooperatively with the neighboring property owners, so that there will be a shared driveway axing the underground parking levels for this property and the adjoining property. This is a site plan for the project. I wanted to use this particular site plan, because it does show that there is a rooftop, an open rooftop deck on this building. It's not on the very topmost portion of the building. There are levels that, of the enclosed space that lead out into this rooftop deck. It does face out into, or towards First Street. Taking you then through the elevations, here is the elevation facing First Street. You can see there on the right-hand side, that kind of purple rectangular area is the entrance to the underground parking level. And to the right of the colored portion of the elevations is a depiction of the project that could come forward at some point in the future, that adjoins this property. Then if we change to the foothills elevation side of the building, you can see here that the, the project, the proposed building, does include a mix of materials and does introduce a number of reliefs in the overall expanse of the building. It does have some outdoor railings and decks that are part of the project. And then if you are to look at either end of the building, you'll see this kind of comparison between the, would be the south end and the north end of the building. Wanted to also show the commission and the public a section through the building that shows the relationship between the four levels of the spaces where the living units will be located, and then the underground parking levels, just to give you that relationship. And we do have a couple of electronic material board sheets here for you to take a look at, to call out the various materials that are part of the building, including the railing details and some of the landscaping details. And I confirm with the applicants that they do have a materials board that they'll be sharing with the commission as part of their presentation. One more material and color board is, electronic version of that is here on the screen for you to take a look at. And again, the applicants will go over this in a little bit more detail as they go through their presentation. One of the questions that came up when the planning commission looked at this during their study session some months ago, was a request for additional landscaping along the front of the building, or to enhance the landscaping that was part of the project. There was a proposal to introduce some planters for some Chinese pistachio trees in the, kind of the parking aisles, along the project frontage on First Street. However, just last week, we learned from our engineering division that those trees would be located over a sewer main, a sewer main that is made up of clay pipe, short segments with a lot of joints. And they do not want to see tree roots or excavation for the trees create any damage to those sewer mains. So they've requested that these trees not be planted in the right-of-way. We do have a condition in your resolution that's part of this. It says that, you know, trees would still be required, but in a location that does not damage the sewer mains. So that's one little revision, I think, since the original packet went out to the commission and the public. Just to give you an idea of what the trees would have looked like, here's a streetscape elevation showing the building in relation to the parking spaces that are being created along First Street, and those trees that would have been in the locations there. And then the lower depiction there shows the building and the relationship of some of the outdoor spaces, the planters and landscaping in relation to the sidewalk. The sidewalk originally, I believe, was proposed to be five feet, but there is a one-foot easement that the applicants are offering, so that the overall width for the pedestrian experience on that sidewalk is six feet. There was a study, a shadow study done on the project, and just wanted to give you an overview of that, or at least share this diagram of the shadow study, in that this depicts the various shadows during, different times during the day, and the shadow that the building will cast. The project is categorically exempt. We consider this an infill project. Given that it is an infill project, there's no further sequoia review that is required. We did not identify any significant impacts that this project would have on the environment to kind of bolster that determination. There were studies done for circulation. There were no significant circulation impacts identified, even a comprehensive circulation study that was done, noise impacts, and also, there was one more for dust impacts. That takes us to the presentation on the part of the applicants for this project. But if you have any questions, we here at the staff table will be happy to answer them for you.
Staff questions? Sally?
So I saw somewhere in our very thorough packet, there was what appeared to be a request for the parking to go to that eight-and-a-half-foot width by 18, down from our standard, which we feel is excessive anyway, of nine-foot by 18. But then that didn't materialize. So the, what we're looking at in the packet shows nine-foot width parking. Did that, do you know why we're, why we're not looking at the eight-and-a-half?
I don't know off the top of my head. Maybe we can have the applicant help address that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
What, how many spots are being created on the street by closing up?
Stole my thunder.
Some of the curb cuts.
That I don't know off the top of my head either. Does the applicant have an answer to that? I see a hand there in the audience.
We'll hold that. Okay. Mayrus, other questions?
No, not right now.
I had one, and it just went, you stole mine, so I, oh, yes. If the engineering department is concerned about roots, tree roots going down and attacking the sewer, does that mean we lose the planting altogether? Or can there be native grasses and other not-so-invasive planting, so that we still get some green on the street? Is that something?
That's, that's a good question. I think, I think the concern shared by our engineering division was the roots that, from the trees, it would cause an impact. So I think it's probably possible that maybe we can do some other type of landscaping, as long as that landscaping, whatever those plants happen to be, do not have invasive roots. I think that would be, if that's what you would like to recommend, I think that would be a good recommendation.
Well, I've seen that very effectively in San Francisco, when there's, there's a very aggressive requirement for trees to be planted with residential work. And it's a city. It's got sidewalks, and is often not a good place to do it. But they, if it's not a good place for a tree, they still require lush planting, and they give you a list of things, so it feels quite elegant. So that's, any other questions?
No, I would agree. They should be able to do it no problem.
Well, we'll figure that out.
We'll figure it out.
Okay. So now, next thing is the applicant gets 10 minutes to speak. And if you would, before your 10 minutes start, let's get answers to those two questions. One was parking, the eight-foot-six versus nine-foot parking space adventure, and the other was how many spaces are going back on the street by reducing the curb cuts?
Okay. Good evening. My name's Chris Hall. I'm with the architects, the applicant's here as well, Sia, and a couple more. And we also have a number of members of the consultant design team here to answer questions, including the landscape architect, who I think could help with some of this issue about the tree, and the civil engineers. So, yes, we were originally wanting the flexibility in our garage to design narrower parking spaces, so we asked for that. And then actually, the staff planner, who wasn't able to make it, did us the favor of suggesting that we could, we could actually arrange it, so we wouldn't require any, any eight-and-a-half-foot, and still hit that number. So we kind of recalibrated the parking and didn't, didn't need it in the end. So it, that's why it got removed.
So it became moot.
We, yeah, I mean, I can get into the nitty-gritty of how it lays out in the garage, but we were trying to keep the parking spaces too far off the wall.
Well, okay, yeah. No, I mean, this is maybe more a discussion item, but I was like, if we can get more spaces by going eight-and-a-half, then that would make sense. But let's save that for discussion.
For discussion.
Okay. Great. And then to answer your question about the existing street parking, I mean, if you drove past there, you'll see it, it's kind of a mess. It's like one massive curb cut, and the, I believe the parking spaces that belong to the project are even on the public right-of-way, sort of where the sidewalk would be. So we're, you know, establishing a more traditional sidewalk that links the two sides, and consolidating into one curb cut for the adjacent property as well as ours. So if you add all that together, you know, we're going from essentially no street parking spaces on the front edge to, I believe it was two, because we have a loading zone as well. And then we have our ramp curb cut. And then if, you know, if we keep the bulbouts, like I said, our landscape architect is here. We learned recently of not having trees implanted in the right-of-way, and we're obviously dismayed by that. But I think we have some ideas, and we would work with the city on how to, you know, man- But I think we have some ideas, and we would work with the city on how to, you know, maintain as nice a landscape and perhaps plant, you know, bulbouts with different plants. But if the bulbouts were removed, obviously, there'd be more street parking as well.
Okay, so now you can start the clock at 10 minutes, because this was extraneous. Thank you.
All right. Well, I had a great 30-slide presentation, and then John presented quite a bit of the content already. So I will skip over some things quickly and kind of focus on, on some of the more salient elements of the design. Let's see, forward. So I'm just going to go through a kind of quick summary of the project, but again, I'll skip over redundant information. We want to talk in a little bit more detail about the community benefits and how we came to them, working with staff, some of the neighborhood considerations. We have, we have been engaging with, with some of the concerned neighbors, a little bit about the zoning compliance, the more detailed genesis of the architecture design, and then the details of the BMR program and the parking situation. So that's the general order. That's the context. Two things I'll want to point out about, about this, this is the kind of aerial around the project, is directly to the north, there's another, another project that's in, being proposed, and I believe you guys have seen it in, in study session, which is 440 First Street. That's the project we're sharing the garage cut with. And you'll see some ghosted elevations of designs they had shared with us. So we've, we've tried to kind of complement that already. And, you know, it'd be about 350 feet of linear, you know, this kind of multifamily residential development on streetscape, combining those three projects with the existing project to the north. It's about a 10-year-old building. There is also a piece of what's called a remnant parcel. I believe it's like 12 to 15 feet wide, which is between us and Foothill. And you'll, you'll see that reference, I'll reference that later in the presentation with respect to some design decisions that have been made. Summary program, we kind of covered this already. I think it's about a 40,000-square-foot building on four floors. About 33,000 of that is, you know, the net livable area of the sellable units. There's a 1,300-square-foot common roof deck, which I'll go through the amenities of, and then about 1,000 square foot of a combined outdoor entry courtyard and lobby. All of the units also have private terraces at-grade or balconies. Some of the highlights of kind of what we were thinking about with the design, I mean, very much focused on the pedestrian environment on First Street and that kind of downtown vision, trying to create a, a nice threshold between the kind of private residential face and the sidewalk. And I'll get into more detail later in the presentation about where we landed on those entry terraces. Obviously utilizing high-quality building materials and landscape and being inspired by the kind of local context of architecture, particularly, you know, the prevalence of Mediterranean style and mid-century modern, I think we were looking mostly at. And then this kind of stepping, very much the massing of the project being generated by both stepping in horizontal as, as well as in, in the vertical plane. So the balconies kind of scooping in to provide some relief, as well as the fourth floor being set back and the, and the ground floor kind of stepping out a little bit to meet the sidewalk. John spoke about some of the community benefits, but the main one I really think was, is, is just sort of creating a streetscape, creating a real sidewalk, creating trees and landscape, minimizing the curb cuts, giving over a foot of the property to a widened sidewalk. And so there's six-foot sidewalk. We also, there's a reference in there about reducing the rear yard, and that was something we really kind of came up with to provide even more of a generous setback to First Street, to give off the, the foot to the, to the sidewalk. But also, I think we didn't think it was a negative impact either on our resident, future residents or the project because of that distance between the edge of paving of Foothill and, and the back being increased by that remnant parcel that's just a 12-foot-wide unused portion of land. And then I have some slides in, towards the end of the presentation that have to do with the privacy concerns raised by neighbors across Foothill. But I'll just talk about what we were, what we have proposed, the applicant has proposed as mitigating those concerns. In the design, we've proposed to increase the height of the parapet on Foothill to four feet. So wherever there's a deck, there's a, there's actually a balcony kind of parapet wall that's four feet that limits the kind of visual down across Foothill. And then we've also located the balconies on the top floor away from a highly sensitive location on the southwest corner, the common, the common area balconies. I don't think I really need to go over this, but there's, we're essentially conforming to the height with, with the density bonus of 11 feet, the 46-foot, which is our, our height limit. I spoke already about the rear setback. We are meeting the 15% affordability requirement, and with 10% moderate, we can ask for this one on, on menu item, which was the height. And then I believe under the state density bonus law, we required 49 parking spaces. We are providing 51, so we are two over that. And we would explore if, if there were a, I think if there were an option to be allowed a more compact space, if that would yield an extra space or something. I think as we move forward, we could explore that. This is the distribution of where the units are. It's, of the 26 units, 21 of them are two bedrooms, ranging from about 1,100 square feet up to about 1,470 square feet for the biggest ones. The corner units tend to be, are designed differently and are larger. There are three one-bedroom units, and there are two anticipated to be three-bedroom units on the penthouse floor. You can see on the, on the right, the penthouse floor. And I, later in the presentation, I'll locate the BMRs units within the plan. This, this is the Foothill elevation. I'll point out that this neighboring structure to the right is, is the status of the design, which I think, again, you guys viewed, I think, a few weeks back. At 440, locates the ramp, which goes to the right as you go into service, that, that northern project off-site and then into our garage to the left. And you can see there was an effort made to, to sort of step back the fourth floor, especially towards First Street. So that was kind of one of the other benefits to providing the roof deck in between those, those two kind of bookend elements on the fourth floor. Those bookend elements actually were set back a couple of feet more and had to come a little bit forward because of a fire department requirement for ladder access to the fourth This is the Foothill elevation, and we're proposing a seven-foot cinder block kind of sound wall that will be stuccoed and have some vines planted on it on recesses. There are six, I believe, quite large redwood trees planted between the project, so that you can see them sort of ghosted in here. I think we have a rendering later on that really shows, shows them, but they're in the range of, I would say, 35 to 45 feet in height currently, and they're obviously And then these two end elevations, the northern one, yeah, the one facing north, which is on the top here, is, would be the party wall with, with the additional projects. We're currently working with that, that owner as well to design our two buildings together to, to sort of match. There's a light well in the middle that you can see that recesses back five feet and provides some light to some, some of the rear bedroom and bathrooms. And then the, the bottom elevation is essentially very similar condition, but it faces Interro, the Interro parking lot currently, and not known when, when or if that will be developed. It is, that elevation is set back two feet from our property line, and there's another two feet onto the Interro property line, which is an access easement for the fire department to reach the backyards of the property. So we do know that there will, those buildings will not be fused in the future if this moves forward as, as proposed. And then we're, we propose for, to sort of adorn that facade because it will be highly visible. I mean, we stand behind the kind of proportions of the facade as being pleasing, but we, there was some suggestion, oh, sorry. Okay. Suggestion from the design review to, to articulate the facade more so that these are recesses in the stucco wall. And I'm going to kind of speed this up a little bit. The roof deck has a kitchen, a little kitchen, it has a little fitness area, and then about 1,300 square feet of outdoor partially covered but open to the elements, space for the, for everyone to use. The, the door yards, we wanted to really kind of design a nice balance between privacy of the, the units and, and the kind of pleasing appearance from the sidewalk. So I kind of have some photos here of, of other projects on First Street, and, and we have our design ideas, if you'd like to discuss them, of why we think that entry terraces should be the way we have.
Thank you. I think we'll stop right here.
Okay.
Does anybody have questions for the architect at this time, or shall we wait for our discussion?
I have two. Do you, do you have the floor plans for the fourth floor or not yet?
Yeah, we, it, the, good question. So we have, I don't know if you recall, but in the study session, many months ago, 10, 10 months ago, I think we had proposed layouts for the fourth floor. We are now wanting to design them custom with buyers in mind, so we've, we've kind of defined a perimeter to the fourth floor, but we haven't laid out where the rooms exactly are. We, yeah.
Okay. And then the spots, the parking spots in the garage, is the idea that they'd be wired for electrical or?
Yeah, we would, we would define a certain number. We've spoken about five at this point to be wired, to be actually wired for EV, and then we would want the potential of providing additional in the future.
I see. That was all I had for now.
Any other questions?
So just to understand, in terms of the parking, if you were to do it with smaller dimensions?
Turn your mic.
Have you run those numbers? Do you know how many more spots you would get there? Or, and are you saying that you would want to do that?
Uh, you know, I'd have to speak with the applicant as well to know any concerns they may have. And to answer your question, no, we don't know that you could, if you had 8.5 feet as the, you know, half of them or a third of them, that if we could get more parking spaces, we'd want to study it. So I, yeah, I don't have an answer for that. We wanted, the original request was to give ourselves flexibility in how we laid out the garage. And, I mean, their typical parking garages have some compacts.
Thank you. I have two requests to speak.
Chair Brusick, do you, do you mind if I amend my presentation just?
Be my guest.
Okay. Couple, couple things to point out. The first is regarding the resolution in front of you. If you look to page nine of the resolution, condition, suggested condition number 19, we did receive a request from the developer to add a sentence at the beginning of the condition. And this is just to, I think, cover some unanticipated or unexpected circumstances in the future. But we would like to add language that says, "Developers shall use commercially reasonable best efforts to provide the following on the final map." And then it would go on for the, the language that's there, which is just sort of.
Could you repeat that?
I'd be happy to.
What's, what is the, what is the problem that is attempting to be solved by this?
If, if the neighboring property owner doesn't reach agreement with this applicant, this property owner, there is a potential problem, potential conflict between the two, and I think this helps address that in some manner.
And you're comfortable with that language, a city attorney?
So this, then this goes to the public benefit issue, right? As to whether or not we can make the public benefit binding? I guess what I would say is that if you incorporate that language, you have to be comfortable with the possibility that you, that that condition won't be met.
Okay. Thank you for your, thank you for.
That's what you have to take into consideration.
It's a good thing to know. All right.
Wait, could I, could I, I'm sorry, could I have you repeat what you just said? I just wanted to be sure.
Sure. So if you, if you include that they will use, say, commercially reasonable best efforts, that means there's a possibility that they won't satisfy the condition because they can't.
Right.
And so you have to be comfortable that whatever impact it's supposed to address, you're comfortable with that potentially not being addressed.
Right. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so.
And then the, the second part of my amended presentation is, usually there's two or three sets of arms up here, and one of those sets of arms knows how to operate a sketch-up model for the downtown, but this pair of arms doesn't know how to do that. But the applicant has provided a PDF renderings of the proposed building in a couple of views of the downtown, and I just wanted to be sure to run you through those and the public through those. This is one overhead view. I think that was looking towards the north. This view would be then looking towards the south. Here's a view of the building from Foothill, from above, looking towards First Street. Another view from the opposite direction across Foothill, looking towards First Street at the back of the building. This is a view down the backside of the building along Foothill to give you a sense of the, the patio placement and the modulation of the walls along that side of the building. And then this is a view from First Street. And then a view from Foothill. So.
Not to be mean, since this isn't your thing, but do we have any of them from lower down at eye level?
We do not.
Okay, so.
We apologize for not having that pair of arms here tonight.
I understand that you're working at a disadvantage, because that's one of the things that we've learned, is that the modeling is a wonderful tool, but it's most effective when it's down at the level that people actually would be seeing it, because this is drone level. So maybe when it goes to city council, if it goes to city council, that, assuming that either there will be technical support that will allow it to be mobile, but at the very least, the images should be, there should be supplementary images.
With eye, eye level.
Okay.
Okay. Any, any of those elevation you want to go back to? Very good to, okay. Thank you.
We'll, we'll get back to it. Okay, so my first speaker is Abby Arons.
I'm really known as the other Abby. Abby Borgon is my client, often my partner, developing houses in the community. The Borgons live locally, raise their children here, and are truly not the typical developer because they're community members. This particular piece of property at 440, we're the next-door neighbor. We're here, one, to support this project, to let you know that the public benefit of two curb cuts are actually on the 440 property, because, you see, we will have no access from the property directly onto First Street. Instead, we have purchased, in a, in a written agreement at this time, from your applicants, an easement on their property to access our underground parking. They've worked together to try to deal with the fire department. This isn't easy. The county does not want to sell the property between Foothill and this property. We tried again last week. It's one long strip. We'd have happily worked with our neighbors, but they are not interested in selling off their small parcels because they think that someday they may need them for their equipment when they do various county projects. We've explained how many large trees are on it to no avail. The fire department's been an interesting go-around for both of these property owners in trying to meet the rules without having access, obviously, to Foothill or the ability to acquire property to pull off Foothill. We want to commend them in working with us. We're the little guy, and thank them very much for their consideration. And though we started with an architectural firm you're most familiar with, have stepped to working drawings with their architects in an attempt to achieve greater cohesion. I don't know if you have any questions of me.
Abby? Thank you.
You bet.
The next speaker is Ramin Sahidi.
Good evening, commissioners. Before I start, may I ask a question from Mr. Biggs on his introduction? Before I start, may I ask a question from Mr. Biggs on his introduction to the project?
Go ahead.
Mr. Biggs, you mentioned that this project is not a secua, it is a secu exam. Well, first, we disagree with that based on the letter we sent, submitted to, to you and the city council. But second, you mentioned the premise for that secu exam is infill, which again, we disagree with it. We don't believe this is an infill. But, but more importantly, how, you, you mentioned that you have done environmental study on this. When and how did you do this environmental study? How come none of us and the thirteen neighbors who signed on this, fourteen neighbors who signed on this petition with us have been notified of this environmental study? And how do you conduct an environmental study without even knowing what is happening on the fourth floor of this building?
I did not say we conducted an environmental study. I said that there were some studies done regarding traffic noise and air impacts that were part of this project.
All right. And so.
Why don't you move on to your.
Clarify that. There was no light pollution studies conducted on us. Again, my name is Ramin Sahidi. Mr. Biggs, if you'd be kind enough to get my other presentation before you start my time, my correct presentation. This is not the correct presentation. I sent you a presentation after that.
This is the presentation you sent me?
No, I sent one after this to you.
I did not get that then.
Okay, now, whatever the presentation is, it has to be part of the packet. So if you did it before, after the packet was distributed to us, we didn't see it. I mean, we saw it, but it hasn't been official. Can you work from the one that's on the screen?
It is very difficult, but I would do, at least I would, I appreciate if my time would be reset.
No, you can start him over. Sure.
Well, I want to start with, with saying that what we're not objecting to, we are not objecting to four-story buildings. We understand four-story buildings are going to go up. We are not objecting to the number of units. We are not, not objecting to the square footage of the units. All we are objecting, and we are not objecting to anything that you think state mandates you to do. What we are objecting is the privacy and light pollution only from the fourth story of this building, not the first three-story, only from the fourth story. If you notice, the fourth story of this building has twenty-eight floor-to-ceiling clear glazing, looking into our yards. And the balconies. How do I, so if you notice, now this presentation again is not optimal, but let me see what I, what I can get in here. If you notice here, we are the closest to this Foothill, present, Foothill than any other neighbor to the stretch of this Foothill. We are a hundred forty foot away, where the closest one after us is the ones to the Safeway, which is two hundred twenty-five feet away. So we are eighty-five foot closer to this development, while this development is thirteen foot higher. So when you are putting that bulk for us, and again, I don't see my, my, if you look at my paper that I sent you, please, on the page four of the paper, you see the bulk presentation that, that we presented to you that shows the impact of this building compared to the Safeway, that geometrically and the correct scale shows that the impact is double the bulk that the neighbors from the Safeway experienced than we do. Because again, it is thirteen foot higher and thirty-eight percent closer to us. The line of sight studies that the developers have done is nothing but deceiving. These are the line studies that we asked them to do. And you can see that through this line of studies, we asked them to present themselves inside the balcony and inside the house. And they literally cut and paste these trees to, and if you notice, these trees are cut and pasted. These are not real. They are all the same tree that have been cut and pasted. And again, the green laser doesn't allow me to point to it. But once we asked them to remove the trees, you can see that our house is directly viewed from these buildings, from inside and outside the balcony, through this glazing. So all we are asking you guys is that if you have to allow four-story buildings, please do your job. Stand up for impacted residents. Medicate the light and privacy pollution that we are being impacted by these buildings. The light that we get from these buildings is truly impacting us. If you see the light that we get from the, across the First Street, the commercial building that is built, that is three stories, and is a hundred feet away, and how it is impacting us, that would be double the intensity of light from twenty-eight floor-to-ceiling patio and glazings, glasses, clear glasses. These LED lights through the ceilings is going to be like a projector. It would be like stadium lights looking right into our houses. And again, this is the story lights. The story poles don't lie. You can see that these are the story poles. And Phoebe, you asked that you want to see from the floor. This is what you see from the ground lever.
Thank you so much for now.
Thank you so much for your time.
The next speaker will be Sue Russell, and she is the last one for whom I have a slip.
Hi, speaking again for the legal women voters. We support residential, this residential on First Street. It's consistent with the downtown vision, so we're happy to see it. We also support the BMR component. I didn't read the plans carefully enough, and he didn't get to this in his presentation. So I just wanted to confirm that the BMRs reflect the mix of the bedroom sizes. Sometimes this is a problem. And I'm also wondering if he's willing to have these be BMR affordable in perpetuity.
Okay.
The, the letter that I sent you was signed by fifteen of the neighbors, and I presented.
Thank you. John, I think we, I saw this in the report, what the BMR mix was.
Yes. It was in the report. It's on the first sheet of the plans.
It's also, we have it in the, in the report. You did a very good job. And there is indeed a mix, and it is in locations that a mix as well.
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And you did it last time. Renee, why don't you start with this one?
Okay. So when I, when I look at my notes of what, you know, we asked them to do, I feel like they've, they've satisfied all of the, almost all of the requests that, that we had. It's interesting that we were four of us last time, and there's only four of us this time. And it's too bad they don't get the benefit of.
Of all seven of us, yes.
All seven of us, and, and in particular, another architect. I always feel like architects give really good.
I miss Du Ho at things like this.
Yeah. So I appreciate that the landscaping has been significantly improved along the front of the property and for the pedestrians. And it looks like there's a question as to, you know, which of the wood fence is preferred? And I do prefer the one that is denser, that doesn't allow to, to see through. And I like that sort of combination of wood and stone, and then wood on top. I still think, and I think we've been consistent, that glass just doesn't work in this area. And we've, for the most part, rejected it. And we actually have rejected it every other time it's been presented on First Street. So to be consistent, I would, I would say that we probably, it's not, it's not appropriate for glass on this, in this area.
Wait, wait. I think you need to be really clear about what you're saying.
On the fourth floor, there still is glass railing. Everywhere else, it looks like it was removed, but it, on the fourth floor, it still exists on the entire perimeter. And I just don't think it works. And I think we have concluded that it doesn't work on, on Main Street.
No, I just wanted to make sure that you were still talking about the railing.
Yes, I'm talking about the railing. Let's see. And I'm going out of order. But in terms of the parking, I, I don't, I would like to see more parking as opposed to, you know, so that you're asking for smaller parking as opposed, as opposed to less parking. I feel like it is a trigger point for people in our, who use our downtown, that they don't think that there's enough parking in the residential projects that are going up there. And so eight and a half is not compact spot. It's actually what all of our neighboring towns have made the rule. And our planning commission recommended that to be the code for La Salta. So I don't see it as compact, and I think you can accomplish probably the deficit. And I also think that, you know, we have previously suggested that where you remove a curb cut and create parking on a street, you should get credit for that as well. So I think that should go into the equation so that that isn't really even much of an ask in my mind. I do like that the fourth floor is stepped back. And I think, you know, the fact that there isn't a roof deck actually on the roof, but it's on the fourth floor, is also probably going to give a lot of people relief. We have been allowing roof decks on the actual top floor, and I think that's caused some people concern. I do think that the way it's laid out, and when I look at A4, you have the seating right up to the edge, and that doesn't seem right. To me, it feels like you need some landscape buffer. Otherwise, that edge is going to have to go higher because someone could just stand on it and look over. And it could, it could be a dangerous situation. So it just feels like the L that it currently exists, that the landscape needs to be flipped. So that is against the, the perimeter. I, and I like the variation of the balconies. Actually, like in the thicker ones in general, a lot more. And I would, wouldn't, I'd be okay with using that throughout. And so when you do, if, if we're consistent on the glass, you do go all the way up, I would maybe consider utilizing that style. I like the materials. It has a, a, a look and feel that I, I think is appropriate and fits in particularly with some of the other projects that we have approved recently on First Street. Let's see. One of the things that I think you did well, I said this already, is the landscaping along the street. And I even think you incorporated benches, which feels really inviting to the public. I think that's, I wrote a few other notes, but it's sort of all over the place. I'd be interested in hearing what some other folks have to say. In terms of public benefit, I think that's pretty, I feel like we've defined that in our code. So I don't know that parking spots have been as, you know, if, I feel like you can solve the parking issue another way and not have to request a public benefit for those. I, I don't see creating two spots on the street as being a public benefit. And I don't think our code has, has defined it as such. I feel like we've created this menu, so I think it's got to be something else from that.
Wasn't there a list of public benefits?
Right.
I mean, because it included the easement that where they both share the driveway. So it wasn't just two parking spaces. John can clarify or somebody. There was a list of items, if I recall.
You mean our code has a list, or they provided a list?
No, I mean, this, John, when, it was either your presentation or John's presentation talked about the public. It's not just the two spaces. It's, I mean, the easement where you're sharing a driveway down into two garages. Again, with the caveat of the language that will be added, that's significant.
So it's on the first page of Platform's informational letter on findings for exceptions for public benefits, where it says, I had a, I could do that because I dog-eared the page. I had the same thinking. It says, "The benefit the city derived from granting the exception is appropriate mitigation when considered against the cost of developer." "The public benefit to the city is an increased sidewalk area and slightly increased front yard setback. The cost to the developer is the loss of front yard, which is offset by the ability to push the building back further into the rear yard. The applicants consider this to be a better resolution for all in that it does not disproportionately benefit or cost the seat or the developer." So I think the benefit they're talking about really is the front sidewalk, which I believe a wider sidewalk is on our code menu of enhancing the pedestrian experience. I think my understanding is the change in the curb cut situation was a icing on the cake thrown in. But that's not really the benefit, except particularly with the trees not going in the bulbous. Now we can look at that as another item. But Renee, you, did you get a chance to finish before we all jump in?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Maris, do you want to continue?
Yeah, sure. I'll just disclose, I spoke with the applicant several months ago about the project. I really like the progress that this project has had since the first time we saw it. The entry and the lobby areas and the layout of the units, the circulation, the floor plans, the, the additional landscaping, I think it all makes sense. I think the incentives and the waivers that are being requested seem fine for me as well. My main comments have to do with the window treatments. I think that the third floor windows, especially on the beige smooth stucco elements, I think really needs some type of awning above those windows. You can see from the renderings that it's.
Could you give us a page reference?
Yeah, A14.
Got it.
You can see from the renderings that it's, it's very vertical in terms of the massing. And I think that you need that horizontal balance. And so having, you know, the, right now, you have the balconies and the railings, and they provide that horizontal language. But the stucco elements kind of just don't have anything going all the way up. And so I think that whether it's a joint or whether it's an awning, I think that something needs to be on those surfaces. And I would, I would, I, I don't know if we're doing the strongly recommend, recommend or this time, but.
We can discuss that afterward.
Sure, yeah.
But yes.
And then on the, the fourth level, I think that having some type of architectural element, you know, not all the way around, but maybe something kind of subtle that extends maybe over the corners. I think that just something's missing on that fourth level. But again, it could be something very subtle. The fourth floor, I think not having the floor plans yet, it might lead to some concerns when it gets to council because they, they wouldn't see the layout when they're approving it. I mean, I can, I can look at it, and I can understand where it's going to go, but I don't know if a lot of people would be able to. And then in regards to the, the neighbors' concerns across Fiddle Expressway, I'm, I'm not sure if I could justify, you know, not having balconies on the, on the fourth level facing Fiddle Expressway, only because there's other projects that, that have balconies. But I would say that looking at your elevation facing Foothill, I counted twenty-eight windows on that fourth level, and all of which, obviously, the floor plans haven't, you know, they're not finished, but they seem to be full height. And so I just think that you could drop some of those windows and, or maybe obscure them in some way, and it wouldn't make or break the design. And I just think that that's a compromise that's right there that you could look into doing. And I think we also, we saw this with fifty-one fifty. I think that that same concern was brought up with the views and the light. So I just think that doing that now, I think, would, would save you in the long run. And then, trying to think, I think eight and a half feet parking, I think that's a great suggestion. So look at that, to see how much more parking you could get. And then, yeah, with the fourth floor, I think that you should design the floor plans for now just so that schematically you can see what's going to be there if we approve it tonight. But my main concerns are really with the windows and, and the window treatments on the third and fourth level. So, you know, I don't have any massing or, or form issues. So I would, I would recommend approval tonight. And that's it.
Sally?
Okay. Yeah, so thank you, very thorough package on, of information. You know, so when I first looked at this, I remember being surprised because I had a different memory from the study session. So I went back to the study session to see what we had seen then. And my surprise was around.
And my surprise was around sort of the stucco, a lot of the stucco. So, Ashley, I think Mayrus already provided some solutions to break that up. But, I was like, where did that all come from? I remember we were also, you know, favorably disposed, not to say we're not favorably disposed. But, what I saw was for the study session, we had hand-drawn drawings, and they were much more organic and warm. And so, then seeing all this stucco was kind of a surprise to me. So, I would wholeheartedly recommend breaking it up or softening as has been recommended. So, that said, there's a lot that works here. I think there's actually significant community benefits. I mean, I really think a shared driveway makes so much sense, or garage access, I should call it, assuming that that happens. And, you know, the extra foot in the sidewalk easement. Because really, you're asking for an eight-foot exception in the rear yard, but there's a 12-foot remnant anyway, so you're talking 20 feet. So, to me, that's not that big an ask. It'd be, it'd be different if you were really up to, if you didn't have that remnant or whatever that little parcel is called. So, I think that, I like that the deck upstairs is embedded into a living level. It really makes it a less obtrusive, you know, you're already having people on that level. So, this is really an excellent way to handle that, I think. And you also, actually, I think, maybe we haven't mentioned it, but you actually haven't requested a density bonus. I mean, with, with providing what you do provide, you could actually provide, I'm not suggesting you. You suggest another floor on top of that, but this is actually more minimalistic than somewhat of what we get for the fact that we're getting some of these BMRs. So, I'm appreciative of that. As you can tell from the previous question, I would encourage you looking at eight and a half width spaces to see if you can get any significant number of, you know, maybe two or more even woodwork. And I do have an issue that south elevation facing Antero, you know, that can be visible potentially for a long time. And I really think that there needs to be some, a specific, that needs to be included in your landscaping plan because that's the only thing that's really going to help that much if you stick with sort of just the indented stucco approach. Because that's going to be a big face on that. Is there, was there a comment about that? Please approach the...
Yeah, that, we actually thought about landscaping the southern elevation, but because of fires requirement to get to the back of the building, we and the Antero property owner have agreed to a reciprocal four-foot easement. So, we can do pavers or some, you know, something that is aesthetically pleasing on the surface, but they don't want anything obstructing their ability to get to the back of the building.
Right, but, I mean, you propose some nice vining along Foothill. Those really wouldn't encroach into that to any great extent. I mean, to me, that's sort of a flesh thing. But, otherwise, that face to me is rather a big expanse of blah.
Understood.
Technical term.
Technical, another technical architectural term. So, anyway, so, to me, I would like to see something else happening.
There's a small sliver of land that's not, because the property line is kind of skewed.
Right in the mark. Talk right in the mic.
Okay, it might just be enough to get some vines. So, that's why we're showing vines growing up, which I actually love. Some people don't seem to like it, but I love that kind of, is it a ficus vine or what? Okay. So, I agree with you, and I think any greening and texture of that facade would be fantastic. We didn't really want to take the, there was like a suggestion of like a Trump de Loy or whatever that kind of makes it look like it's actually buildings with, or windows with people in it. So, yeah, I, right, I mean, it's appropriate in some buildings and styles. I didn't, we didn't want to take that step yet. So, I think the recesses with the shadow as well as the vine is our proposal.
Right, well, you used the term ghosted earlier, and I didn't want those vines to just be ghosted. I want them to be, you know, something actually going on there. I want them in the plan, yeah, I think it needs it.
Strong recommendation.
Yeah, strong recommendation. And then, I think one last thing, so, back to the balcony railings. And there was an alternate, on page A16, there's, you know, sort of the dense, these are the ground-level terracing wood. So, there's a dense one that I think is your preference and might have been Renee's preference also. I'm not sure.
Mayrus, did you prefer dense or open?
I think dense, yeah, dense I would go with.
And Renee?
Yep, okay. And what I was going to say is that elsewhere, for instance, if you look at L1.01, your open fence concept is actually shown on the left side of that page I just quoted, F1, open fence concept alternative. But, it's not as open as what you show on A16. So, I mean, there could, there was something that looked to be a more in-between. Because I do agree that the entry terrace's fence alternative is very, very open. And so, I wasn't sure whether it was actually meant to be, that F1 was a different thing. Do you see what I'm looking at on L1.01? The left side, you show a privacy fence concept, and then you show what you call an open fence concept alternative. But, that looks a lot less open than what you're showing on page A16.
Can I ask you?
Yes, please.
We originally designed the denser version and prefer it. I mean, as architects and the applicants. So, if you guys are happy with that, that's what we would proceed with. But, I do think we could vary the gap, obviously.
Right.
And it might be interesting to actually not have it be consistent, but maybe get more transparent towards the top or something.
Mm-hmm, okay, all right.
Any other comments?
I think that was my last one.
Okay. So, I also think this is an example of where we've had a progression between the study session and the design and the input from the public and from staff and from us. And I think the results have been much, much improved. I'm pleased to see it. As Mayrus said, I really think that the broken-up massing is very effective. I concur with Renee that glass railing at the rear is not a good idea. That should be opaque. I would say that, agree that going to narrower spaces is a better ask than giving us less parking. So, I think if you are willing to spend the time, it would be probably more attractive. I know that's something which council always appreciates, is when there's more parking as opposed to an ask for less. I agree that the surrounded embedded roof deck is brilliant because it has always been a hotspot, not the roof deck, but the elevator shaft that goes to the roof deck because then you have this thing sticking up, and it appears to be yet another story when a building is taller than people are used to seeing anyway. So, I hope this is a concept that we see more frequently in the future of how to get a public space that doesn't have the sticking-up part of the hoist part of the elevator. I think the modified landscape is very much improved. I had the same reaction as other commissioners, which is, there's a line here that says in the design review narrative for the new downtown development, it says, "Building mass is articulated to relate to human scale, yes, but horizontally and vertically, yes. Building elevations have variation in depth, yes, and avoid large blank wall spaces." There's a lot of stucco. There's an awful lot of stucco, and it is, it's kind of like my mantra. Vice Mayor Pepper always says, "Where are the solar panels?" I always say, "Where are the differentiating expansion joints in the stucco so that we don't have an undifferentiated plane?" And particularly here, I thought Mayrus's comment about the verticality of that could be much enhanced. And in fact, I drew all over my drawings. I drew horizontal expansion joints so that it felt like the same kind of banding, which was the, on the menu of the architectural approach, it's bands, as opposed to googly eyes, which we've seen before. There is an order here that's very well-developed, and I think could be enhanced by doing that. I take Mayrus's comment about the fourth floor development with Mr. Shahidi's comments, which is, "You're showing 28 full-height glass openings." If you're developing the fourth floor units, you have an opportunity to, for example, pull in a wall and turn the glass sideways instead of aiming across. You have the ability to drop the head. You have the ability to raise the sill. You have the ability to do things when you're working, granted, on a speculative thing, but people who come in to buy can do customizing anyway. And in my experience as an architect, people don't focus on the windows. They focus on the countertops and the cabinets. And so, if you work on the interior finishes as the customization, you can have the control that'll allow you to go to city council with a response to a neighbor, an area of the neighborhood, which is really taking the full brunt of where the street narrows at that point. So, it's really, it enhances the effect it has on this area. And I think the benefit of having that remnant strip that we talk about is there are big trees there. But, although we all work our best to protect when you're digging big holes, it's hard to keep the trees alive. So, if it's not your property, can you offer to plant redwoods on there for the county? No, apparently not, but...
Use it for equipment.
Well, perhaps, perhaps the protection of the arborist protection for the roots around the digging there can be excessively careful to see if you can sustain them, and also water them during construction, which will make them very happy. And even if the county decides to do something evil, it'll be on them and not on you, which is good. Now, I'm going to go to my, so, I'm very concerned about the amount of stucco. I made a note here that perhaps you might be willing to consider alternative elevations that input some of the composition siding to break up some of the stucco because usually we see change of materials. This is, architecturally, may be a reason you're doing it. So, either improve the stucco appearance or break it up in some way with that material. That's those, hold on a minute. Redwoods. I think that you did a very good job at announcing the pedestrian arrival point. I think that's been a tremendous improvement. I'm very pleased with that. In fact, I think that there's a really nuanced approach to the slight rise for the units and the ground level for the pedestrians that I think is very elegantly done and achieves a really good feeling. You might also look at maybe the stucco, another thought might be the color. You might be able to do something by changing either the various elements or going from a cream color to one that has a little more depth to it so it doesn't pop out at you so much in contrast. And let me get to my L page. I would like if your landscape person could, you don't have to speak, but when you make the presentation, since you've lost the trees in the bulbous, I think it would be very useful to show non-invasive root species that could provide flowers or waving grasses or something to make that still feel like a lovely thing, even if we don't get a tree for shade. I also prefer the more opaque railing on the alternatives. I think you'll have to be careful, I can't find my reference here. Du Ho Lee at one point pointed out that if you have horizontal railings, they become ladders. And so, you have to be very careful about the spacing in the opening so little feet don't go in them and then climb over in a very unpleasant way. So, we've given you, I think, a consistent feedback on railings, on stucco, on fourth floor. I feel like, feels like we could get a crafted recommendation to city council. John, you've been taking good notes. If we don't get it all, speak up, please. Someone want to attempt that? Okay.
Do you want to hear?
Don't all jump at once, okay.
You want to hear my list of things captured?
Yes, please.
So, you were, you mentioned that the fourth floor plan needs to be developed before it goes on to the city council. Window treatments on the third and fourth floor windows need to be evaluated.
Well, on the fourth floor development, I in particular, and I'll look for concurrence, would like them to look at the privacy and light pollution on that floor and controlling it by the design if they can.
I have that as a separate, yeah.
Further down, okay.
This one, I think, was really talking about the trim around the windows?
Yes, oh, yes.
Just put down trim.
Because you had pointed out, Mayrus, that because there was so much stucco, the windows needed some better definition.
Yeah, I think that those third floor windows would benefit from something besides just the joints. So, yeah, I'd like to see that.
And then, to the fourth floor windows, to either shorten, screen, modulate the wall, to pull in the walls, reorient it so that the wall would turn sideways, can lower or raise the head height and the sill heights. Those are all things that can be explored. Or introduce some opaque glass into the windows themselves. Condition number 19, that was some language we may need to explore. Explore other planting opportunities for the, I'll just call them landscape wells in the street with a species of, that having non-invasive roots. Delete the edge seating at the outdoor deck on the fourth level. Glass railing at the fourth level, and I heard someone mention at the rear of the building as well, should be reevaluated.
I think you only said in the rear.
I said only in the rear. Are you comfortable with that?
That's fine.
It can be eliminated if there's no glass on the foothill side.
Oh, good.
Okay, I think there was some glass on the first street.
Well, there's an inconsistency in the drawings then, so you need to correct it.
Okay. Tighten the spacing on the railings for the deck enclosures or maybe introduce a graduated spacing as the spacing goes up. That was at the ground level along First Street. For the parking spaces, I heard you strongly encouraging the applicant and maybe encouraging the city council to explore eight-and-a-half-foot wide spaces as long as they result in more parking in the garage down below. Introduce expansion joints in the stucco, break up the expanses of stucco, maybe even using some color changes. And then, at the back of the building, the 28 full-height glass openings or window openings on the fourth level, again, that was a treatment where you could pull up the, pull down the head height, raise the sill height, or develop some other controls, including interior controls that would help screen the lighting and privacy issues.
Okay, so, what fell between the cracks was Sally's response about the south elevation.
Oh, yes, the south.
To see what...
Landscaping.
Landscaping or, I don't know, something to, for the period of time till something else goes up against it, provide an attractive streetscape as people are walking down there. So, I think that's the only one that fell between the cracks. I think you got them all other than that. So, can we have a motion that...
But, I just want to clarify, we're not asking them to do all of it. It's not joints and color and railings, it's look at that.
What we're saying is, here are some suggestions. The problem you need to solve is there's a lot of stucco. It's very light-colored, it's very undifferentiated. And here are some things you could do to make it better.
It's like a menu.
It's an on, it's an on-menu.
I think my only concern is, and I'd want to maybe ask the applicant and the architect because I think we've seen this before where we will say a bunch of great comments, but then it doesn't happen. So, I just don't know how receptive they are to making these changes because we're not... changes, because we're not going to make them conditions. So...
But we could make them strong recommendations.
Yeah.
However, we have a new category of, a flag for city council of things that we care deeply about that we're not strongly enough to condition.
Right. Because we don't design from the deists.
Yes.
Yeah.
For applicants.
But is there anything, I just, I'm curious if the architect, is there anything that maybe you don't agree with, or?
No. I mean, I don't have, and I don't think the applicant has objections on, on any of the suggestions that you had. I mean, we would want to comprehensively evaluate it and obviously not just sprinkle on the ice cream cone. But, but yeah, I think, I think a little ledger at the top of the window would work. I mean, we would need expansion joints anyway. Sorry, we haven't drawn them yet. And then, maybe some sort of slightly more articulated cornice at the parapet, I think, might, might help as well to just differentiate the top. So, yes, we are open to those suggestions.
Yeah, okay.
So, one thing I'm, before we make a motion, this will help clarify, you know, we sometimes take that amount of feedback and say, "Well, we want to see it again." And sometimes we say, "Okay, it's clear enough. Take it forward." I'm not sure where this stands. Do we, I mean, because it's kind of a lot.
Well, there's a question, because this is a really important project.
Mm-hmm.
And we have four commissioners here. And normally, we have seven. This is the dead minimum. So, I guess, are you commissioners comfortable with sending this forward or the recommendation? Are you applicant comfortable not getting the full panoply of us giving you more, more people giving you more suggestions?
We, yeah. To answer your question, we're comfortable moving forward. And we understand your recommendations. And we will do our very best to meet all of them, if not, meet all of them. So...
Okay. Are you comfortable with that? What do you think?
I mean, I am. I mean, the same four people who saw it last time.
Well, yeah, that's true. We have exactly the same four.
So, the idea that, you know, in another meeting, we would have completely new eyes on this feels a little unfair.
Well, they get whips on, is what's going on.
Right. Well, in that, we've seen that.
And we...
And I think, for me, everything that, that I didn't say that you all said, I agree with. So, I think that there's a unanimous, so if they follow everything that we mentioned, then I think we'll be in good shape.
Or if they, if they present and say, "We looked, this was the list."
Sure.
"Here's what we tried. These worked. This one didn't for this reason." Then, city council can say, "Okay, you listened. You tried. Now, we'll see if it's acceptable to us."
Yeah.
I mean, to me, the only real big thing is how they address with breaking up the stucco.
Mm-hmm.
And it, and I'll leave that to you as architects. If you feel comfortable with that, I'll go along, I can go along with the group.
And I don't think the joints and that.
We just wanted to mention, we did actually get the chance to meet up with Duho, I believe is his name. And it was a very productive session after our, our study session. He took his, his own private time to meet us. So, we had his...
He would have had to, he would have to declare ex parte, but he's not here to have an ex parte.
Right, right.
I also don't think what we've suggested, the joints, the, and...
A ledge.
And, and the ledge, and what, what the applicant's already said he'd be willing to do, is a significant fundamental difference. It's like, just very subtle.
Well, I think it's...
That's why I said I'll, I'll go with whatever our architects recommend.
I'm comfortable that there is a consensus, as Mayrus pointed out. We're pretty comfortable with where the building is. These are something that's remediable. And I think we can, I'm okay. If someone wants to make a motion and couch it in terms of the list that John did...
Oh, sorry. One more thing.
Say it again.
The, the electric parking, I don't know if five electric spots are going to be. I don't know if that'll go over very well. So, you might want to look into putting more. So, yeah, that was a little, sorry, that was the one thing.
Is there a standard? Is there one that's coming?
I don't think there's a standard, but I think that the more, the better.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I think it's kind of like the parking. If you can show more, it may be, you may be compliant, but you show more, people will be more receptive. If you show more EV charging stations, people will be more receptive. If you show solar panels, one of the city council people will be really receptive. So, be aware of that. Okay. Who's going to craft the motion?
And for the, just for the commission's knowledge, what I will do is, I will bullet point all of these, this list, in the next set of minutes for you. So, when it comes back to you, you can look through that and make sure that I've accurately captured what you had recommended. Not that it gives you a chance to add things, but just clarify the list.
I think, I think the stucco is the thing that needs that new category, which is, strongly recommend city council look at this piece.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And once again, will someone craft the motion, please? Don't look at me.
Okay. I will.
Yeah, you try, Roni.
Right. I will recommend the city council approval of design review and subdivision, this is the one, right?
Yes.
Subdivision applications, D one-nine zero-zero-one and TM nineteen zero-zero-one, per the findings and conditions contained in the resolution, as well as the recommendations listed by the planning commissioners for the modifications or enhancements, enhancements suggested.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
So, proposed by Wagner, seconded by Meadows, and I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Good luck with your project. The next item on our list is our favorite commissioners' reports and comments. I went to the city council meeting on October twenty-second. The thing that was of most interest was the review of fifty-one fifty, which was not approved deliberately. They wanted more study about certain items. I think they're struggling, city council, in my opinion, is struggling with the balance of more affordable units. It's definitely desirable, but as we talk about, if you do this, something else happens and it has to be balanced. And so, they are struggling with that to a certain extent. They're talking about what John had talked about earlier, which is the BMRs in perpetuity, which we're waiting to hear for a ruling on that. But they're leaning heavily towards that. And they are looking, and we're looking at the mix of the BMRs. And so, there isn't a true consensus on council at this moment, but they're working on it. Yeah? Yeah. So, that was really...
I think, one thing that I, I noticed, and I don't want to, you know, bore you to death, but one thing that I noticed was the Inluffy, the Parkland, the other property in place of the park in Luffy. And tonight, there was one project that was doing the BMR in place of the Inluffy. I think it might, it just might be helpful to figure out what our options are for future projects. Because that was, I know that was something we didn't discuss for fifty-one fifty. But it, it was a big discussion point when they talked about it.
Well, actually...
We didn't even know about that for a lot.
And Commissioner Enander, I mean, councilperson Enander pointed out that there's something wrong with the way we've set up our Inluffy, because if we do it by number of units as opposed to square footage, we're not getting the balance we're looking for. Did I get that right?
Yes, but that can't work out. We can't change that for parks. There's...
Oh, okay.
There could be law sets how you can do parks, but other kinds of impact things...
Could be looked at.
If you do by unit, you may want to look at how you do by square...
Square footage. Okay. If we want to get more units in.
Yeah.
We aren't making a disincentive to get more units in, which is what's happening now. Did, was there any other meeting other than that one?
Well, the joint meeting, though, three of the, four of us were at the joint meeting with city council, which I thought was a good conversation.
Yeah. I mean, I think what came out of that is they really want us to do some heavy lifting on, what's the term? Sorry, brain dead. Yeah.
Bad cop, bad cop?
Well, yes. We'll see. Okay. Do you have things on the future agenda that we should be aware of?
Thank you. First, your next agenda, it's time to elect a chair and vice chair. So, we'll have that on your agenda for the twenty-first of November. Also, on the twenty-first of November, the city attorney's office will be giving an overview on the Brown Act and covering topics such as agendas, minutes, conflicts of interest, and other important things. That's going to be at five PM here in the council chambers.
Is that mandatory?
It is not mandatory, but we strongly encourage commissioners.
Okay. Because there are, there is some ethics training that we have that's mandatory.
There is some ethics training. Yes, it is mandatory.
And, and you're aware, and I've told you, I'm not going to be at a meeting on the twenty-first. So, that would apply to both of those meetings.
Correct. And then, for future agendas, next Tuesday, November the twelfth, council meeting, we have the R three four-point-five zoning amendments coming in front of the city council. We also have another request for an exemption to story polls for the project at forty-three fifty El Camino Real. The building codes will be coming back to the city council. Then, we have a special meeting of the city council on November the nineteenth. They're going to be looking at the reach codes. Then, there's going to also be...
Do you know what the reach codes are, guys?
I haven't seen them, but...
So, I mean, you know, the concept is that we're going to do better than what the state is requiring on energy and green building.
In basically eliminating the use of natural gas and...
Yeah, I just heard this in the other towns.
...a lot of appliances. So, that's...
Even for cooking.
Even for cooking, potentially.
Well, it turns out the two things that people most care about are cooking and gas fireplaces.
Fireplaces. I don't know how they're going to put that in school.
Because they already had us not have wood fireplaces, and now we want to have gas fireplaces.
Well, they're saying you can have it, but all new construction will not.
Will not.
Yeah, no, right.
I think the gas kitchens, if you burn that.
One question about that. Will we actually have any scientific evidence presented to us that explains why we're doing it?
The environmental commission is going to be doing the presentation. They're making the recommendation to council. And I believe they do have evidence that supports the recommendations they're making to the city council.
Okay.
Excuse me for going, I want to circle back. The zoning that's coming back to council for that multi-letter, multi-number one, there was a sub-panel that was supposed to be preparing something. Isn't that the one for which two city council people were looking at? No.
I don't think so. I think the subcommittee was looking at the elevator tower at the project on El Camino Real.
I'm inflating it with something else. Thank you.
Yeah. Put me in panic mode.
Sorry.
We also have the city-owned open space and parkland redesignations coming in front of council on the meeting of the nineteenth. And just so you know, I left a copy of your meeting attendance, a kind of revised copy at the dais for you this evening, where I scratched out. That's the one right there.
So, the only one that changed really was Ronit?
Ronit's date.
Yeah. The date changed. There's not going to be a council meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Good idea.
So, the nineteenth will make up for that.
Oh, but actually, on this thing that you, it says December third is the reorg, rather than November twenty. Oh, that's the council reorg. Sorry.
City council reorganization, correct.
Right. Okay. Not ours.
Your planning commission meeting on the twenty-first, we have the election of the chair and vice chair. Then, you have two use permits applications. One is for a school located on Orange Avenue, and another is for a veterinary clinic on Riverside Drive. And then, the council meeting on the twenty-sixth is canceled. Reorganization of the city council at their meeting on December the third. I think Chair Semec is slated to attend that meeting. Thursday, December fifth. So far, on your agenda, we only have a use permit modification for eighteen sixty Grant Avenue. I'm not quite sure what that's entailing.
If it turns out that's the only item on that, perhaps we could push that to the next meeting?
We could explore that. Yep. And then, on December the tenth, the city council meeting, they're going to be taking up the project at fifty-one fifty El Camino Real again, along with the proposed project at nine-nine-nine Fremont Avenue in Loyola Corners.
That should be, who's, who is the...
It'll be a long night.
Who is the commissioner who has got that one?
The...
December ninth?
December tenth.
You know, Phoebe.
Lucky me.
Bring caffeine.
And then, that takes us to your last meeting of the year, which is on December nineteenth. And so far, we don't have anything on your agenda for that meeting.
Keep it that way, because I've got...
That's it for now.
Going on that night.
December tenth. Okay. I just want to make sure I have it. I'm pretty sure I have it on the calendar, but I didn't know what a fun meeting it was going to be. Okay.
Lucky draw.
With that, I'm going to close this. We're done.
All righty.